Good evening and welcome to our March 8, 2022 Borough Council meeting. Tonight, we are conducting our monthly Borough Council meeting both in person and virtually, utilizing the Zoom webinar platform. We're glad that you've joined us here tonight for this meeting. Participants who are attending tonight's meeting, both in person and virtually, may provide public comment during the public participation portions of tonight's meeting, as well as the public hearings portion of tonight's agenda. During these portions of the agenda, community members joining us via Zoom can raise their hand digitally. Our staff will unmute your microphone and announce your name. You'll then be able to speak to council. We'll start with members of public who are here in council chambers with us tonight, and then go to those who are joining us remotely. We'll have two public comment periods, one towards the beginning, one towards the end. Due to the breadth of tonight's agenda, we will be limiting the first round of public participation to one hour, and we are asking participants to keep their comments to under three minutes, so that we can hear from everybody about all of the items that are on tonight's agenda. With that, thank you again for joining us tonight. We will now begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence. And if you can, please begin with roll call.
Ms. Berkeley?
Present.
Mr. Cármenito?
Present.
Ms. Dugan?
Here.
Mr. Kirchner?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Present.
Mr. Weiss?
Present.
Mr. Ewald?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, manager, assistant, chief, and solicitor here, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Krick. With that, I do not know of any presentations tonight. So with that, we will open our first round of public participation. We have the podium directly in front of us here with the microphone. If any members of the public wishing to make public comment tonight, please sign in on the ledger that it's on the podium. Keep in mind that we do want you to stay in front of the microphone, because that helps everybody at home hear you. And as I said in our opening, we are trying to limit things to three minutes and under, so that we can hear from everyone, since we do have quite a few people here. If you are making public comment, and somebody else has also made a similar comment, we welcome you to echo those comments, but don't feel the need to say them in their entirety if needs be. So with that, we'll open the first round of public participation, and we will have this for the next hour, if needs be.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Jane Dougdale, a resident of Phoenixville. Once again, Phoenixville Area Transition and Phoenixville Green Team are coming to Borough Council about the sale of the kindergarten center. We understand that feelings are high about your offer to buy the site, and whether or not your offer was properly considered by the school board. We appreciate your answering several of our queries this past week about how it could have happened that the board would prefer selling this iconic green site to a high-density developer, rather than keeping it in public hands. We understand your frustration that the site was originally purchased, developed, and maintained with taxpayer money for 70 years, creating an irony that taxpayers would need to be buying it again. We've also reached out to the school district with the same queries, and we have been assured by Dr. Superintendent Dr. Fagley that he would be happy to invite at least one of his board members to meet with one or more members of this Borough Council and some community members to pursue talks ahead of the board vote next week. We're here tonight to ask you to please accept this invitation. We are asking the school board to please postpone the March 14 vote in order to explore other options for this sale. We hope that you can help convince them to do so. Here are a number of viable options that both the board and the borough could consider. Change the terms of the sale to half and half ownership, borough and district. Challenge the appraisal value. Look for a public partner. Create a joint venture with the board and district. Lease the site from the district instead of buying it. Pursue county participation for a resilient center. Take a future perspective on the value of the center. Look at it as a return on the environment. Or take the property through eminent domain, as TE is doing. A number of us hope to speak to Borough Council tonight about these options, and we appreciate your listening to our plea to help save this amazing acreage. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next. Imagine there's more. Whoever you want to approach.
David Lutzker with Phoenixville Green Team on Morgan Street. Yes, a lot has been said, and I won't repeat things that maybe will be said, have been said. We're all, I think, trying to accomplish the same goal, especially those of us in the room tonight. Nonetheless, there's another party, and in order to get this deal done, we need to come to terms with the school board. I think that it's time to maybe get creative about how we approach pretty much everything in the bid. The price itself, question the appraisal. You can always get different appraisals. And also the terms. So I appreciate, really do appreciate, the term of 100% grant money as a taxpayer, and knowing what the borough is capable of doing in terms of getting grant money. Nonetheless, in a competitive bid situation, changing those terms can make the bid be more attractive, and in the end, that's what we do want, is to make the bid more attractive. To suggest perhaps a 50% grant and 50% guaranteed funding, it doesn't have to be paid immediately. I would expect that the borough would be able to find the other 50%, but just saying that if it weren't found, that the borough would come up with that money, I think would be adequate to make the bid stronger. Going beyond that, other, again, creative ideas. The idea of an amicable eminent domain option may be put on the table, and I think that should be explored. The eminent domain option has been used in our region, in Delaware County, as well as Chester County, in the not-too-distant past, in these kinds of deals between municipalities and school boards. So I think that's one idea. Now, I don't have the time or the ability to do that kind of research, but there's an army of people here who want to see this done, who are thinking creatively, and we'd like to be part of that process as much as needed in order to get this done, because clearly, the public is behind this deal, and we'll do what it takes to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Hello. My name is Emmeline Fox. I am a resident here in the borough, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Green Team, as well as Phoenixville Area Transition. And, you know, yes, I'm echoing what everyone is saying from the Green Team and Transition. And our big thing tonight is, like, we want you to make a motion to send a letter to the school board and ask for them to postpone the vote. And, you know, members of the school board listened for almost an hour of comments the other week, and they responded to us. I was there, and they said they do want to hear from the borough, and I understand, and thank you for John communicating with me a little bit this past week, that that is not really what they indicated in the past, but that is, you know, what I see them saying. They turned to us and responded, and said, "We do want to hear. We want to have clarification of what the borough's plan is." And so, you know, regardless of past communication, it seems clear that there is still a crack in the door, and we are urging you to get back in there and try it open. But let's do this with partnership in mind. So I was there, and I did hear that the members of the borough, offering on the November 10th presentation to the school board, the idea of a possible collaboration or partnership, and maybe it's the release, which I believe someone is going to talk about that a little bit more. But in general, there can be such great benefits of a collaborative relationship between an area's school board and the borough. I was looking at an article, and it summarized the positive impacts of strong partnerships between boroughs and school boards, from communities from New Jersey to Oregon. And it stated, "The future holds bountiful opportunities for deeper teamwork between school boards and city councils. Firm partnerships set a solid foundation to address growing needs and concerning sustainability efforts, grant writing, school security, and shared technology. Other promising areas of collaboration include collective bargaining, energy management, and purchasing." So that is beyond this property, but let's use this unique property as an opportunity, as a catalyst for building a stronger relationship between the borough and the school district. Why not reset negotiation structure and have a joint venture with the borough and the school district? And maybe, you know, it helps us envision and pursue grants together. So I might be dressed apart a little bit. I do work in the world of farming and farm-based education, and I witnessed time and time again the benefits of getting kids, adults, everyone outside and in touch with the land. So could there be a joint venture that includes students helping tend the trees in the borough's proposed tree nursery? How about growing food for the community members that need it most, perhaps a farm and CSA that provides food to the school district? Or maybe, you know, there's, I'm sure there are so many other ventures that could be a part of this, not just related to food and farming, but maybe, you know, health and nutrition. I know the building itself is an asset, because we can do combined, like, cooking activities and, you know, get health providers, universities, extension offices involved. There's, I'm sure, so many ways that there could be a collaboration between both the borough, the school district, and other organizations. So yes, yeah, yeah. So again, there's limited, a limit, sorry. There's so many ways that we can work together to make this property give back to not only the school district, as well as the students, and the community at large. And so again, yeah, we are just asking that tonight, that you reach out to the school board with the intention of building a relationship and partnership, and bring a motion tonight to write a letter to the school board and ask for them to postpone the vote. And I also ask that you reach out to the suggestion of the meeting with Dr. Fagley and the community to continue this dialogue. And, yeah, I think it could lead to many amazing opportunities, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Susan Meadows from 113 Main Street. I am here to represent the Phoenixville Business Alliance. The following represents all types of businesses, from retail services to restaurants, attorneys, any kind of business that we were able to meet with on Bridge Street. During last month's Borough Council meeting, the following comments were made. "We need to have those conversations, because we are a community where all need to thrive and figure things out together. I would hope organizations like Chamber and PBA would help them to find solutions. How do we grow as we grow into an event like this? There has to be a balance. There needs to be robust conversation. There has been a lot of discussion within the business community. Unfortunately, the Phoenixville Business Alliance has not been formally included in any planning regarding the street closures. We were told there had been many conversations and many surveys done, but that was not the case. We attempted to start a dialogue where we presented the results of our survey to Borough Council. Without being a part of the conversation, we're not certain where this is heading, which makes it impossible for our organization and members to find solutions. We have attempted to participate with Borough Council in the most recent Parks and Rec Committee meetings. We were disappointed to see that robust conversations are not happening. A decision this large, though will affect so many people, needs to have the robust conversations that were mentioned and never occurred. Perhaps a workshop meeting, instead of one-hour Parks and Rec Committee meeting, would be in order." Other comments were made. "We need to wrap our minds around what makes sense, what looks good, and what is our goal. We need to define what the goal is. The goal has shifted a little bit. The goal has still not been stated and clarified. Neither have there been any discussions regarding how to deal with the difficulty with traffic and parking as a result of the street closures. Again, robust conversations need to happen before any decisions are made. Our organization is still unclear as to why street closures on the 100 and 200 blocks of Bridge Street every week for the entire weekend is the only option being considered. Robust conversations regarding all possible options are necessary. Decisions should be made using empirical data. This is the perfect opportunity to gather data and quantify the effects of the closures on the community, both business and residential, comparing weekends with closures and those without. PPA attempted to be as transparent as possible with our recent business survey. The results of the survey we presented to borough reps and sent to the entire Borough Council, as well as the borough manager. We invited questions and conversations regarding the survey. No one followed up with any questions or concerns. We were disappointed that the fidelity of the survey was questioned at the Borough Council meeting, as well as a statement made that many businesses were not contacted. This could have easily been addressed with a phone call or an email in a professional manner, instead of disparaging the survey in a public forum. We chose to clarify those details in an additional email, showing that the statements that many businesses were not contacted was not true, and again, inviting any questions or concerns. We attempted to visit every business. We stated that the results were very carefully analyzed, and we were certain that each business that participated had one vote. We also requested that Parks and Rec Committee allow us to present this data at their meeting. We are disappointed to not receive a response." One hundred and four businesses in the downtown Phoenixville area were invited to participate in the PBA survey. A total of 67 businesses responded. The details of the survey were provided to all Borough Council members previously. Based on the results of the survey, PBA is recommending street closures once a month in conjunction with First Fridays for one or two days. "We appreciate the response to closed streets in 2020. To help our restaurants and business neighbors survive, this is no longer the case. Please note, PBA is not opposed to all street closures. We are requesting that street closures occur once a month in conjunction with First Fridays. Street closures for special events should continue, as they have done in the past, allowing for Reeves Park and Main Street to be used for events as well. If the borough is serious about having robust conversations with the business community, we respectfully ask that the PBA and business community as a whole be a part of the street closure planning meetings with borough staff and/or elected officials. Our businesses and our livelihoods will be affected by any decision made. We agree with the statement made at the most recent Borough Council meeting. The one thing we should take away from 2020 is the high level of corroboration we had between all business, borough, and residents. I hope we continue to do that. This is your chance to actually make that corroboration happen. Sincerely, the Phoenixville Business Alliance."
This will be quick. There's a lot of smarter and more eloquent people than--
Sir, can you please give your name?
Yep, sorry. Dan Weiser. So there's a lot of smarter people here. I just want to follow up on some of the comments regarding the potential sale of the kindergarten center. I think, at least in my perception, the community as a whole would much rather prefer that a deal be made with the council and the school district. I think that I see some of the desire on the school board to bring income to the school district. That makes sense to me. But I feel like there should be, through a creative process and a more public process, a discussion between both the council and the school board, either through, you know, some long-term lease to buy, or I've just heard eminent domain is a potential option, which I don't know the details of that too much, but I think the community overwhelmingly would support the idea of the borough purchasing it and the property remaining in the hands of the public. And that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Hi. My name is Dana Waldman. I live on Hall Street. I'm here speaking on behalf of Phoenixville Green Team and Phoenixville Area Transition in regards to the potential sale of the kindergarten center. So there have been many studies on the countless benefits of open space, and the one particular benefit that I'm about to speak of is the financial value, a return on environment, as it is called. So here's an example. According to the EPA, every dollar spent on planting and caring for a community tree yields benefits that are seven times that investment. Larger picture. Nature provides clean water, stormwater management, and flood protection, erosion control, carbon sequestration, and air pollutant removal, all for free. Once it's removed, the taxpayer is now responsible for replacing these systems with new infrastructure. So keeping the open and green space intact is a way to avoid future dollars being spent on new infrastructure and disaster cleanups, which, let's face it, those are inevitable. We were hit really hard by Ida, and we will continue to be hit harder and harder. We quite literally cannot afford to be losing any of our open spaces. These spaces are what's protecting us, and it's what's protecting our dollars. If we have any hope of meeting the goals of the Chester County Climate Action Plan, and if we want to avoid the financial, any of the financial burden of future natural disasters, we need to be investing in climate resiliency, which means investing in and protecting our ecosystems, so that they may protect us. Toll Brothers doesn't care about open space. They don't care about climate resiliency. They don't care about the future of Phoenixville or its people, but you guys do. So I ask you to consider this space as an investment, a return on environment. There's so much potential in this space, and so much opportunity for Phoenixville to thrive. So please take this into consideration, and we would love to see you guys make a deal with the school board. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dana.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Kirby, and I am from Belle Haven Home, located at 164 Bridge Street. I want to speak to you tonight about the vision of transforming Bridge Street into a European promenade, or as has been suggested, a pedestrian-only street, such as Pearl Street in Boulder, Colorado. And it's a wonderful vision. I've been fortunate enough to have experienced several streets such as these throughout Europe, and I've also spent many days on Pearl Street in downtown Boulder when I visit my son. The difference between those streets and the situation that we have here currently on Bridge Street is that those streets were designed to be pedestrian-only 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Here in the States, as with Boulder, they were created after years and years of extensive traffic and neighborhood impact surveys. They were hardscaped. They were landscaped. Ample public parking lots were added, and in the absence of that, as in Europe, public transportation was abundant, with convenient drop-off areas. Jitneys or trolleys are available to make these streets accessible to all, so that they can be enjoyed by all. A pedestrian-only street vibrant with galleries, shopping, and dining cannot be created by simply pacing barricades at the end of a major thoroughfare every weekend for months on end, and just figuring out the logistics and dealing with the impacts later. The street closures were a creative and necessary step taken by the borough during the height of the pandemic, and you are absolutely to be commended for your innovative response. I know as a business owner, and I know the patrons of this town, we're extremely grateful to you for your response on this. But however, continuing to do so, to do more of the same while attempting to make this vision a reality, at this point, is just putting the horse before, or the cart before the horse. By negatively impacting businesses in many cases, and deterring people from coming into town, whether it be due to parking limitations or accessibility, you're in danger of losing the very thing that you're trying to create. I recently saw a post in social media, you know you're from Phoenixville, when someone was asking where they could go in Phoenixville this spring to bring 65-plus seniors into town for an event they want to do, a dining event. And the overwhelming response, I want to say 99% of the responses that this particular individual received was, "If it's in the spring, stay away from Phoenixville." That's the message we're sending. Stay away from Phoenixville. So until we, as a community, figure it all out, we do the planning and the work that is imperative to bring this vision to life, it's been suggested that we close the streets one weekend a month, coinciding with First Friday, and make that weekend, the entire weekend, the true open-air experience that we are trying to promote. In addition to closing the streets for days as needed for larger events, such as Lulu, Food Truck Festival, Blob Fest, that draw even larger crowds to the downtown area. Respectfully, concerns voiced over the continuity and the ability to market these events doesn't really hold water. Prior to the closures, people had absolutely no problem figuring out when these events were being held, and they showed up en masse. So I think we need to give the general public a little bit more credit than we are currently doing. So in conclusion, it's my hope, and the hope of many business owners and residents in this town, that we can work together as a community to reach a compromise. The benefits, the benefits all of us, and until the planning and the work is done that is vitally necessary to make this vision a reality, let's work together to find a solution that unites us rather than divides us. Thank you for your time.
Hello. Joan Borregui, 544 Chester Avenue. Working with nonprofit organizations like PBA and the Arts Center for over 20 years, I've learned how good community leaders take a new idea and make it a success. They analyze its potential, its limits, and then put it in a step-by-step plan, readjusting as the plan grows. This planning also helps when you're asking for sponsorship, participation, whatever. It gives the business owners reassurance that you know how to implement this, the benefit to them, to the community, et cetera. So much so, that when I went into Molly McGaughers with the survey, I sat at the quiet bar, and I was greeted from behind with, "How much money you need, Joan? I haven't seen the owner in five years. This isn't because I'm a gifted salesperson. It's because I've always been sincere and always given them a plan, a plan to better our community." And I cannot overemphasize enough-- And I cannot overemphasize enough. The backbone of our community is the small businesses downtown. In 2004 alone, when the empty bowls was just taking off, tax needed over $3,000 to budget the event. The small businesses pulled together and raised over $2,000 for it. Not because it directly helped them, but because it helped the community and look at it now. Same with First Friday, Firebird, House Tour, each one helping each other and each one with a plan. We've heard over and over about growing pains. Well, if you want something to grow, you gotta feed it. You said yourself, you never marketed this due to the COVIDs and we understand that. Perhaps this is why your survey shows a decrease in favorability from your last 2021 survey. Now that you can discuss new plans, you've done nothing to reassure our community that you know how to implement this. You seem to think rebranding the street closure is the answer. You've also used a survey that has only 2,600 participants. We have 18,000 residents. If you believe these 1,600 people, the 62%, can support all of our businesses for over 25 weekends, then please tell us your plan. Do you think we could have promoted First Friday or the Firebird or anything without even a plan or any discussion? While doing the survey, I was questioned many times if no street, street closures was our alternative. I said, of course not. And then I explained our once-a-month with First Friday trial. If it gains traction, you increase weekends for a fall schedule. Even though they benefited from the street closures and voted for it, they said they were willing to try the once-a-month proposal. Lastly, I offered to help with the PBA survey because we saw how this council stepped up and took action during COVID. We were impressed with your competence and creativity. We understand that any new plan has obstacles and that, and the time it takes to discuss the solutions can be overwhelming. That's why we thought that the survey that has over 65% business participation and a detailed presentation would be welcome, a welcome tool to help you discuss some solutions. You see, we're not expecting you to have all the answers or to know everything. Intelligent leaders don't know everything, but they are willing to challenge everything they know. I hope, I sincerely hope this council is up for that challenge.
Hi. I'm Keely Wrigley. I own a business at 12 South Main Street. I'm here to request and propose a compromise on the Bridge Street closure. So Bridge Street is slated to be closed for 84 weekend days out of the year. And as you've heard, not every business and resident supports the Bridge Street closure as proposed every weekend from May to the first week of November. I still think there are many concerns that haven't been fully addressed in terms of traffic, parking, inclusivity and safety, but specifically the overall measurable goal in the plan. I love that Paba has suggested an alternative and a compromise. And I am here as well to ask for a compromise and maybe propose two more. So an easy, simple compromise. Half of the time, half of the time, proposal number one, half of the months. So have the street closed from May 6th to July 31st. This would include all the currently approved TCEs except for Food Fest October 1st, which is a borough event, and a whole lot of Lulu, which does not require the Bridge Street closure. So the street would be open from August to the year's end. All First Fridays in August, September, October, November can return to only closing Main Street only. There are, there are already ballisters in place on Main and Church. So proposal number two, half the weekends. So Bridge Street is closed for the first and second weekend of every month from May to October. This would include all currently approved TCEs except for the Phoenixville Art Street Festival, which is only requesting the 200 block of Bridge Street on Saturday, June 18th from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So I'm going to anticipate some resistance and maybe some rebuttals. So I've been told a partial closure is too hard to market. But if someone visits the town when Bridge Street is open, I think that most likely they will park at Main and Bridge and then head to their favorite restaurant and no harm will occur. So even if you can't market it, no big deal. I've been told that it's easier and cheaper to just close the street for the whole weekend as opposed to just closing it for one TCE. So historically, the borough closed one block of Bridge Street or Main Street for TCEs for the time period requested in hours, not days. Never was it thought to close the whole street and the parking lot for the whole weekend just for one TCE. Historically, events were actually encouraged to move to Reeves Park, whether it was due to the high number of downtown street closures, the number of attendees, residents' concerns, safety or traffic. Please note that none of the currently approved TCEs have requested the 100 block, the 200 block and the parking lot on Main and Bridge to be closed similar to the open-air experience. From my experience as a TCE coordinator, I've paid the cost of shutting down a section of the street or the parking lot for barricades, for signage, for fire police, for insurance, et cetera. Currently, all the TCEs are scheduled for Friday and Saturday. Again, my experience, all barricades and signage for our Saturday event were provided on Friday by the borough employees. There was no weekend work required by staff. All ballisters were able to be lifted or lowered by hired or paid fire police or an on-duty officer. I do not believe that our weekend event has ever caused a fee to the borough that was not already worked into the invoice of our event. But you can correct me if I'm mistaken. Another rebuttal, I've also been told that there are too many TCEs already downtown that have been scheduled. So we have to close the street all weekends for six months. But if you look at the calendar currently, there are big gaps of months with no TCEs. After Blob Fest, nothing is slated for the rest of July, for August and September. So what will be the additional cost of hiring entertainment for these weekends void of a TCE? This is a gap in the schedule that might be perfect for a compromise. So think about it. Or the Parks and Rec can work with the TCEs to fit them within the first two weeks of the month. There are many other brilliant compromises and these are just two. And these compromises would allow for businesses, residents and commuters to assess the Bridge Street closure in a world where COVID restraints are eased. They can compare having the street open versus having it closed and provide feedback. Those residents who have voiced their concerns about noise, traffic, litter, quality of life, et cetera, they can get a small breather. And so I was also, also told if it doesn't work, we'll stop it. But what is our metric here for success and whose voice are you actually listening to? I'm not sure. So rather than if it doesn't work, let's stop it. How about test, rest and assess? And for those of you who want this every weekend for six months, what do you have to lose by compromising? It will cause you no harm and it might appear as you are actively listening to all those involved. So thank you for your thoughtful consideration.
John McPhee, Business Manager, Diving Cat Studio Gallery. I'm here for two items. The first item is you are considering applications for the vacancy of the North Ward. One of those applications is Garrett Bale. Gary is a personal friend of mine. I've known him for more than a dozen years. He and his wife have been residents of the borough for more than 30 years, raised their family here and have restored and preserved one of Phoenixville's oldest homes. I have found him to be honest and in all matters integrity. And I would believe that he would be an awesome asset to Borough Council. As you consider your applications, please consider his highly. The second thing is with regard to the open-air market. I've written it and I've stated it at the last Borough Council meeting as well as the committee meeting. And we full at Diving Cat Studio fully support the open-air market from mid-May through early October every weekend. Recently, I have walked Bridge Street at, in the seven o'clock hour on two successive Saturdays. I found every restaurant to be near or at capacity. And at the same time, I found two retail stores open. Diving Cat Studio and another. On those Saturday evenings, 30% of our business was done between seven o'clock in the evening and closing. We understand our obligation and our responsibility to be open and to be a participant in the community. And we fully support the marketing and effort and would request that you continue to do that. Thank you very much.
Hi. I'm Ellie Akompor. Ellie's Choice. I am the last of the retailers from the 90s. So we have been here 28 years. First Fridays was started by Barry Cassidy many years ago. And it was designated for the retailers to help them. The retailers have been the backbone of this community all these years. They were the people who actually put in these parking lots many years ago. A lot of people don't even know that. Anyhow, the bars are fine. Restaurants are fine. We do good business, but we also do bad business because when you block off every weekend, my Saturday customers can't come here because there's no place for them to park. You have problems with people with handicap, not enough area for them to be able to get up that hill, especially in a wheelchair. So something should be done for that. The other thing is my front door was busted with a beer bottle. And they left the beer bottle. I had vomit in my hallways. People go to the bathroom in our hallways. They go to the bathroom on the streets. They even go to bathroom in the fountain. And I tell people, don't let your children play in that. So anyhow, closing once a month is good. But when we did it, we didn't close it down, as you remember, Richard. We did not close Bridge Street down or Main Street. We get volunteers come in, we spread them through, all through downtown. It gave everybody a chance and every business was really good and happy. So I'm looking at you not to close Bridge Street every month. And if you do, I would just do it, say, from mid-May to mid-October because these retailers still need a chance. We have some down here that have not, you know, recuperated from the pandemic. And everything's the back, the bars, the bars, the bars. Well, you know what? We are the backbones. Check into what happened to Chestnut Street when they closed Chestnut Street down and Manny Oak, all their retailers left and came here at the end of the 90s. So how I know, because I helped bring them in. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Rodney Platt and I have comments on both primary issues tonight. I'll first mention my opinion and research on the business closures. I think it was unfortunate that the residents, patrons were polled first and not the businesses. The stakeholders must survive in order for this plan to work. I went to media recently because I spent three years living near media years ago after they started their dining under the dining under the starlight or whatever, something like that. Anyway, that's been very successful all these years. And they've tried other things as well to augment such as First Fridays and, and weekend closures during the pandemic. And they found all of those other efforts to be not worth the, not worth it. Our biggest issue here is that the best, the businesses at night who take advantage of the closures would be the biggest restaurants and those on the corners where, that are not affected so much by the closures. They're already busy on weekends, no matter what. You're not helping them as, like you could if you took the position of media and do a Wednesday closure each week where it's a, it's a weaker night, everybody will benefit. Now I'm going to switch gears to, to the kindergarten sale. I am in favor of the borough purchasing it for the use of a learning center, educational, environmental building. And I've reached out to Delaware Riverkeeper Network who has noted that Phoenixville years ago, that Phoenixville is a, deserves special recognition as a river town on a scenic river. And it actually has, it is, has a most preeminent position in Pennsylvania because it has one river and three creeks nearby. And they, Delaware Riverkeeper Network could well use this as an example and a learning center. And I, they have an interest, but I, I don't know to what degree. I am in talks with them to have them reach out to you. So thank you very much for, for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you, Rodney.
Hi, everybody. My name is Christian DeVal. I live at 456 Grand Street in the borough. And I also am a member of the Green Team and many others that are trying to add some comment to this amazing opportunity that you have because there really isn't that much land left in the borough of Phoenixville, thanks to your hard work and so many others that have made Phoenixville such an amazing community that everybody wants to live in. So much so that you have the school district in possession of land that is, should be there for public use, which you guys have been spending a lot of time to put together. Conversation, we hope that that conversation continues. And with that, we'd like you to ask tonight, your borough manager, to send a letter to the school district, asking them to postpone the vote. That's it. This, this issue is so critical and important and truly believe that between the two bodies of the Borough Council and the school district, you guys can find a way to keep this property in the public hands, whether it be through, through eminent domain, whether it be through the purchase price or whether it be just deciding to do a joint venture or whatever. What I hand out to you, I just want you to be aware that perhaps the reason that the developer Toll Brothers is willing to offer so much money is that they are looking to acquire the property, the PIP property. I don't know whether that's a fact or not, but I think it's important that since you have a puzzle here, that that's what's there. And that is something that you have to take into consideration as to what is the value of the land and how to come up to that value. And a process of eminent domain that the Terrific East Town School District has gone through with the, the nursery next door is a great way to learn from as to what happens when you go through that process. The same thing happened with Wilson Farm Park, again, right here in Chester County. And the school district did it with the land that they acquired at the old golf course. So the only thing seems like the only issue is what is the value of the land that you can do? It also might end up being the train station, which is on the thing. So again, time is of the essence and time can only be there if you allow it to be. So we ask you tonight to please send a letter to the school district and ask them to postpone the vote so that these discussions can continue and the community as a whole can benefit. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Chris.
Hi, Mark Connolly on the kindergarten center. You know, I've been here twice before in my life. One was in negotiations with Mel Kior with regard to the. One was in negotiations with Mel Kior with regard to the Ash site. Many of you may not know, but that was a development plan that the borough stepped up and negotiated and purchased that property. That was a bold move. It took vision to recognize that open space was important. The other time that I was in this situation was with Charlestown Township. Phoenix, the Great Valley School District purchased a pile farm. The Charlestown Township recognized it as an asset in their open space. And if you haven't been to Charlestown Park, Right Side Park, you'll see it as a beautiful preservation of a wonderful Chester County site. It's one of the gems of Charlestown's open space. So here we are with a similar situation, and I want to thank Jonathan Yu and Jean and the whole team in negotiating. I understand that it's been difficult. I understand that the valuation issues are structural. I understand that it's difficult for you to commit future councils to purchase something. These are constraints in the deal that I realize are structural and difficult. But I hope that you're determined to persevere. We've gotten the sense from the school district, and tell us if we're wrong, is that you walked away when your letter went out on the 18th, or they walked away. And I'm hoping, as Chris just said, that this council make a motion, direct Jean so that he has the body behind him saying, look, we want to talk, guys. Postpone the vote. That is our ask. The other thing I wanted to do is congratulate you on the vision and the definition of your bid. Learning center. What a perfectly consistent redevelopment plan from a kindergarten center to a community learning center, from kids to seniors. We have an unbelievable opportunity. We have this great civic center that provides a venue. And here we have 18,000 square feet and seven acres to play outside and to come inside and support organizations. Finally, I have the pleasure of serving the commissioners as a member of the Energy and Advisory Board for Chester County. We just constructed and published Climate Action Plan. We were very successful advocates in this room. We're successful in advocating for a sustainability manager. So the good news is, is that our county is committing resources and good thoughts and plans to move sustainability forward. If you read Section 8, the Comprehensive Plan, the Regional Comprehensive Plan, if you read the Climate Action Plan, if you remember the storm this year passed, resilience is a situation that is going to persist. There is no normal. We are going to be in hard times, the situations of power. Who knows, even gasoline. This facility could attract money for a resilience hub. It could provide resources in the case of an incident or difficulties. This is a great project. Thank you very much for pursuing it, but please don't quit. So we're hoping that at the end of the public comments here, that this subject can be brought up in the first action so we don't have to hang around. You know what we're asking for. We're asking for a motion from the board to direct Jean and John and the team to just simply ask the school district, hold on a second. I don't think we've looked at all the options. Please, please ask the school district to postpone the vote. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Craig Devine again. In full disclosure, I applied for the vacancy. So I've already spoken to the board, so just so you know, this is my second time speaking to the board. But what I'm speaking now about is I hope to go to the school district meeting, and I concur with Christian DeValle's proposal to ask them to delay the vote. I just want to say this passion that we see tonight makes me excited, and I also appreciate the dispassion or disinterest so that there's just consideration of everything. I just hope that we all move with compassion to communicate love for one another. How can we cultivate community which balances these three, passion, dispassion, and compassion? And what role does the Borough Council have in doing that, balancing the three? What role does the school district have? What does the school district play in cultivating such community? That's a question I'm going to put to the community, to the school district. And what best practices other communities have that are like us, that thrive, that seem to be thriving? So thank you very much, and I look forward to what happens.
Good evening. I'm Tommy Duffy. I'm a resident at 10 South Main Street and also representing a business at the same address. The Bridge Street closures being voted on tonight will total 90 days in 2020. I'm sorry, approximately 90 days in 2022. The breakdown would be three days by four weekends a month. Seven days a week equals 90, or approximately 90. I look back at the Phoenixville First Calendar of Events for 2019 and counted the number of events that were scheduled for downtown Phoenixville to include Gay Street, Star Street, and Bridge Street and Main Street. There were 21 events scheduled from March to November. And out of these 21 downtown events, 15 of these totaling a closure of 18 days were to be held on Bridge Street, while six of these totaling eight days were to be held on Main Street. Total street closures were 26 days. In addition to downtown events, 15 more events were held throughout town. Majority were at Reeves Park. And even more events, if you want to count the farmer's market, Green Earth Day, and assorted walks and 5K runs that are held on the riverside of town. So you have a full total of 36 events held in town that benefit all and not just some. It is 2022, and restrictions have been lifted, and it is time to return what made downtown so much fun, vibrant, and exciting, and back to being a downtown that supports all businesses. We believe what worked well in 2019 and was marketed well by the borough plus the chamber will work again. Thank you.
Anyone else here tonight? Otherwise, we can switch over. I think we have a couple of hands raised by Zoom. So if nobody else is here for public at the moment, we'll have staff go through. We have about nine minutes left of the public comment period.
Stephanie, I've turned on your microphone.
Okay, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Niklosi. I live at 206 Washington. I'm here primarily for the kindergarten center issue. I'd like to urge you to please reach out to the Phoenixville Area School District and persuade them to come to a mutually beneficial agreement that serves, better serves the community than a sale to Toll Brothers that is expected to be voted on on the 14th. One of the things when I moved here to Phoenixville that drew me here was, you know, not just the lovely, charming downtown of Phoenixville, but also the proximity to green spaces and the community use areas that you guys have. It was those things in combination that brought me here and brought many young people and families who look to be active but stay involved in this charming downtown center that you have built. And we see these green spaces rapidly disappearing, and the community, the community sentiment is really turning towards development against it. And anything you can do to reach out and try and support, you know, either the sale to the borough or a long-term lease or I heard eminent domain thrown out, literally anything would be more desirable. For me as a resident and for a number of my neighbors, green space, once lost, cannot be replaced. You've already heard multiple other people talk about its beneficial aspects for resiliency, but there's also just an inherent value to green space that, I mean, if you've heard of forest bathing, reduce stress, you know, health implications, being able to maintain some of these spaces for our community as we grow so that we're not overrunning our parks with this wonderfully growing community is going to be vastly important. And I think it would be a much more farsighted and long-sighted, you know, goal to keep this within our community rather than sell it to developers. When we, we also really don't have the infrastructure right now to support that kind of growth, in my opinion, but that's another story. So that would be, that would be my primary plea is to maintain this green spaces. There's over two acres of forested area that, once gone, cannot be replaced. And I know the community is vast, just from everyone I've spoken to, my neighbors, my friends. They're all in support of keeping this. So anything you guys, even if you just sit down and have a beer, figure it out. We'd really love it. You're all elected officials that we voted into office, and we have faith and trust in you that you guys can sit down together, put your feelings aside as to, you know, what maybe has occurred in the past and really find a better path forward. Particularly, you know, I would love to see Phoenixville become, you know, the forefront of an environmentally, ecologically minded town. Like, I think it's going to be with this Phoenixville Neo coming out. This would be just another step in that direction. So, and that's what I had to say. And then on the other matter that was raised tonight, I, as a resident, I do love the closings of the streets, actually, because it's easier to bring my kids downtown. But I would want to make sure that we're not going to lose any local businesses, you know, because of that. So I hope that the data has been looked at from both sides. I did vote in favor of it on the online poll because I've been able to enjoy downtown much more that way, but that's all. All right. It's me. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
I think we have time for two more. Ms. Logan.
Shannon, I've turned on your microphone.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay, thank you. So I don't want to repeat everything that was already said. I'm just going to get to the point about the kindergarten center. So we, we know you're in a position where you can't really increase your financial offer, but every day is an opportunity to reach back out and reopen the line of communication. We know you presented your plan to the school board to apply for grant, open space grant funding that would require the property to be deeded as open space. And we also know that you brought to the attention of the school board Section 7078 of the Pennsylvania Public School Code, which provides that any land sold by the district to the borough will revert to the district in the event that the property is no longer used for public purpose. From your perspective, these conditions communicate a fail-safe promise should your intentions go awry. However, it seems that the school code interpretation is a little unclear to members of the school board who remain skeptical. So I just had a couple of suggestions for what can be done to reassure them in addition to all the other wonderful and creative suggestions that you got from others tonight. I would suggest maybe collecting interpretations from multiple lawyers to confirm the correct legal interpretation and present this to the school board members. This could increase the confidence of the school board members that the code will uphold your intentions for the property. And I also recommend offering to include in legal transfer documents the reverter clause that's referenced in the school code that would make the portion of school code applicable. If you take the initiative to offer these conditions, it really would show how serious you are. And so these are just a couple of extra steps you can take to show the school board with professionalism and clarity that you want it, and it will help build further trust in working towards a better future for this property. Also, as the others have asked, we request that you join us in requesting that the school board delay next week's vote. We know that you are also fellow citizens who share our vision for more green space. And many of the school board members actually want this too. They just want to be able to feel confident moving forward. So our requests would greatly be reinforced by your request. And I also just wanted to say really quickly that about the street closures, I live on Washington Avenue, and I experienced a heavy increase in traffic on these weekends that Bridge Street is closed. And I know that a lot of other side streets also experience this. And I, so these streets weren't really designed for this much traffic capacity. There's no speed bumps, no stoplights. I see speeding cars, and there's also heavy pedestrian traffic. We have students who are coming home from school down Lincoln Avenue on these weekends, concerned that the traffic increases. The traffic increases on the streets surrounding Bridge Street without any additional traffic studies can lead to unsafe conditions for some people. And I also said in the survey that was conducted by the borough that I actually have a disabled family member who's been unable to enjoy any of the businesses and restaurants on Bridge Street for the past two years in the summertime because we can't park closely enough for him to walk to the shops or the restaurants. So they actually haven't been coming to Phoenixville altogether just because they can't find parking. So I feel this is something that really should be addressed and explored by meeting with the downtown businesses and restaurants, as was suggested, to come up with some more creative solutions. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
And this will be the last one for this round of public participation as we're already over an hour. Ms. Logan.
Chris, I've turned on your microphone.
Hello. I actually sent a letter to all Borough Council members, and I will actually decline to comment now. My letter was about not closing Bridge Street. I'll give my time instead to someone else who may have not contacted you earlier. Thank you.
We'll do one last one.
Jan, I've turned on your microphone.
Hi, can you hear me? Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay. My name is Janice Swar, and I live at 211 Church Street. And Ellie, I want to piggyback on what Ellie said about the businesses being the backbone of the community. And my comments to you guys, you've heard them before, so I'm simply repeating, but I'm underscoring a lot of the concerns of the residents here on Church Street with the extreme amount of traffic that is diverted when Bridge Street is closed throughout the entire season. The speeding, the noise, and the extra pollution from the exhaust and everything else. But most of all, the fact that we have been talking that a lot, including myself, but I don't need medals pinned on my chest for it. I wanted to, I wanted to buy into the dream. We were here when Phoenixville wasn't popular. We're the ones who invested here. And I'm very, very heightened to see residents from all over this community, not only those of us who have lived here a long time. I've been here 26 years, but people who are just coming into town who want to see this remain a sweet, and yes, environmentally ethical town and not be overrun with development. I'm proud of everyone who's town and not be overrun with development. I'm proud of everyone who spoke up on that regard tonight, extremely proud. So I would also join the chorus of those who would want to see us stay a bit more humble, less greedy and definitely look for quality of life, which we will lose if this rampant headlong out of control development continues. The closure of Bridge Street for the entire season as it is proposed destroys the quality of life for the surrounding streets and the surrounding residents, many of whom put their money where their mouth was a long time ago. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you for everybody who had an opportunity to speak tonight. We'll now move on to, that will close our first round of public participation. We do have another round later on in the meeting as well as rounds during the public hearing pertaining to the actual public hearings. With that, we're doing something new this month, which is a consent agenda, as I've discussed with most members of Borough Council leading into tonight. We've identified a number of items under which are already either unanimous or near unanimous items that come to us every year or every couple of months. Listed in, under the official agenda, we do have our consent agenda as item five. As I don't know that I had a chance to speak with everybody from council, the way we simply operate this is all items are deemed approval approved unless there's an item that needs to be removed from the consent agenda, at which that item can simply be removed and will be replaced at the appropriate spot in the agenda and discussed at that point during the night. Does everyone on council have had a chance to review the consent agenda? And are there any items that need to be removed for tonight's consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President, I would ask under item C, under the consent agenda, item four, be moved back to item thirteen B under Parks and Rec.
Very good. We will move the bed race application to Parks and Rec reporting. Any other items under the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda is deemed approved. So we'll move on to.
You do still have to make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Sorry. So we need a motion to accept the consent agenda. The items don't need to be listed individually.
No, please.
So moved.
Second.
Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Consent agenda is approved. With that, we'll move on to communications and council participation. One item I want to point out is this Thursday during, and I believe Mr. Moore will, will touch on this, but in case anybody tunes out later on, this evening, six PM, there is a public meeting during our planning commission meeting for the, for the update to our comprehensive plan. So I know there's been a, a number of folks that diligently attend our meetings who had asked about the updates on our comprehensive plans. So the first public meeting will be during our planning commission meeting this Thursday. It's starting at six PM. And I'm sure Mr. Moore will have more on that later. Any other communications or council participation tonight? I will make one comment on this in terms of the school district information from, you know, at least up until now, from, from our perspective, we've made the best offer that we're able to make to the school district. They said, thank you. They said, thank you. You answered all of our questions and we will now move on with selling it. So I'm happy to meet with them. However, I've had one person reach out to me from, from their side. So we'll, we'll deal with that and discuss that later on potentially. But with that, any other council communications or participation? Seeing none, I'll move on to the mayor's report. Mr. Hershler.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. Thanks to everyone who joined us at home. Of course, thank you, everyone, for participating tonight in all of these dialogues, certainly challenging and exciting things all at the same time for a growing community. Not much to report today. I just want to say thank you to our Borough Council members, our staff, and many of you may have seen, but we were fortunate to have a visit from Governor Wolf last week and he was here to use Phoenixville as a backdrop to talk about the economy. And so we really got to just kind of play a nice place for him to have that meeting. But it was a wonderful opportunity for us to really present. You see some of the things in the back of the room. We were able to present some of the projects that we have coming up to him. It was the first time since 2008 that a sitting governor came to visit us here in Phoenixville. So we were very grateful for that. Thank you to all of our staff and team members for making that possible.
Very good. With that, we'll move on to appointments, public resolutions. This, later on in the agenda, under police personnel, public safety, we will have a couple motions for appointments. As we ask every month, there is a, an up to date spreadsheet on the Borough website that lists all of our boards committees, their vacancies, their upcoming renewal dates. So if there's any boards or committees, any members of the public are interested in volunteering for, we ask that you reach out to a councilperson or staff and we can always let you know when an upcoming vacancy is and suggest that you apply for it. So with that, we'll move on to new business. First item tonight is a motion to issue a decision in order regarding the structure located at eight hundred Bridge Street. I believe we could, well, if we can start with the motion, we'll start to follow with discussion.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to issue a decision in order regarding the structure located at eight hundred Bridge Street.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Kirchner. The decision order was provided in our packet. This is pertaining to the burned out structure that was the prima. And it's now a mess. Any questions or comments on the decision in order? So to be clear, this is not an eminent domain. This is simply a process that would for, encourage the landowner to demolish and clean the site. And then if not, any fees, the borough would then demolish and clean the site and apply a mechanic's fee or municipal lien onto the property. So this is not a taking, just to be clear.
Okay, I'd be, I'd be happy to.
We don't do these too often.
The, the order that is proposed in this decision in order provides the property owner with 60 days from the date of this order to demolish the structure and remove the resultant debris in order to remediate the nuisance conditions on the property. As a part of this decision in order, after the hearing that was held in January, the borough will be finding that there is in fact a nuisance condition on the property as a result of the fire. In the event that the property owner does not act within 60 days, the borough is provided with the authority to remove the structure itself and charge the costs of removal to the property owner pursuant to a municipal lien. However, if we have communication even after the 60 days that the property owner is moving forward with remediation, the borough is not required to step in right at the 60 days. We can use our judgment.
I think he's got any questions from council? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Our next item up is for a zoning hearing board representation. What is council's pleasure?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Kirchner.
I make a motion that we authorize the solicitor to attend and represent the borough's interest before the zoning hearing board in the matter of the variance request by U.S. Home Corporation doing, doing business as la norme.
Motion by Mr. Kirchner, second by Mr. Moore. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries seven zero. And third, under new business, we have an agreement between the Borough and Schuylkill River Heritage Center for the Phoenix Wheel location.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement between the Borough and the Schuylkill River Heritage Center for the Phoenix Wheel.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Or background on the agreement? Everybody had a chance to review the agreement that was placed in the packet. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries seven zero. With that, we do have a, under item 10, we have a resolution for tonight. What is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adopt a resolution acknowledging Edwin Soto for his six years of service as the North Ward representative on Borough Council.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Kirchner, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries seven zero. I'll read that resolution into the record. A resolution by the council of the Borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania, acknowledging Edwin Soto for his six years of service on Borough Council. Whereas Edwin Soto has served honorably as a councilman for the North Ward since January fourth, 2016. And whereas Edwin Soto has served as the Parks and Rec Committee Chairman and Borough Council liaison to the Beautification Advisory Commission since January twenty, January fourth, 2016. And whereas Edwin Soto completed his first term of office as the North Ward Councilman on January, sorry. Edwin Soto completes his term of office as the North Ward Councilman on March eighth, 2022. And whereas Edwin Soto's participation in the affairs of the Borough Government has provided invaluable service to the North Ward and residents as a whole. And whereas Borough Council wishes to express its appreciation for Edwin Soto for his public service. Now therefore be it resolved and it is hereby resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Phoenixville that Edwin Soto is recognized and publicly acknowledged for his efforts to provide for the efficient and effective government, which is responsive to the needs of its citizens. We'll present this formally to Edwin. We do appreciate all the time and energy he's brought forth during his term. So thank you for that. With that, I'll need a motion to recess the public meeting into a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. I will turn this public hearing over to our solicitor.
This is a public hearing on an ordinance amending the Code of the Borough of Phoenixville as amended, chapter one, administration and government, part one, elected officers by providing for additional compensation. This ordinance was duly advertised for a hearing to be held tonight and potentially voted on by Borough Council. This ordinance increases the compensation of the mayor of the borough, the Borough Council President and the Borough Council Members by fifty dollars per month. Are there any questions from Borough Council?
Ms. Kirchner. We need to have Brian's turn off their mics because.
There it goes. I, I just ask a point of clarification. We cannot approve that increase for ourselves tonight, correct? This is for newly seated members going forward.
That's correct. This has been approved by Borough Council in the past. The, the form is what we are correcting at this point. So for the persons elected in November of 2021, it would be in effect since we are in effect correcting the form of a past approval. However, for people who were elected prior to 2021, this would go into effect for future elections.
Correct. The, 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 the mayor and the four that were elected, Mr. Carmonito, that came into office, they'll get the pay raise now. The other remaining members won't get their pay raise until January of twenty three. Twenty four. Twenty four.
Assuming reelection.
Thank you for the clarification. I just didn't want the public to get the idea that we're voting ourselves a pay increase here.
Yeah. So this is actually, I think this actually came bubbled up in 2020 and that's, and then it slipped, you know, it slipped. So this is just closing off something that was already approved. Okay. Any other questions? Correct. Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor? Oh, sorry. Your, it's your show. Sorry.
Seeing no further questions, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing and resume the public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss to close the public hearing. Questions, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries the public hearing is now closed. We'll need a motion to either take action on that item or move on to the next.
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance amended to chapter one.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries five two. Okay. We will now need a motion to recess the public hearing to open a public hearing to, to address a motion to adopt an ordinance amending administration and government.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries seven zero. We're now in a public hearing pertaining to part seven, chapter one.
This hearing is for an ordinance of the Borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania, amending chapter one, administration and government, part seven, pensions, retirement and social security of the Code of Ordinances of the Borough of Phoenixville. This ordinance was duly advertised for a hearing and potential consideration this evening. However, it is my understanding that a continuance is desired to next month's meeting, which is.
It would be continued to the April twelfth meeting. That's because the exhibit as part of the ordinance is still in the hands of the attorney for the union as well as our labor attorney. There are now some of the details of the actual plan itself, which is the exhibit. So we shouldn't take action on this tonight. We should continue it until next month.
And that would be at seven PM.
Do we need to now close the public hearing or?
Before we close the public hearing, we should actually have a motion to continue the consideration of the ordinance until next month's meeting.
Till April twelfth.
At seven PM.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Now a motion to postpone the public hearing? Is that needed? What's that? Public hearing and, and resume the public meeting. Yeah.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss to close the public hearing and resume the public meeting. With that, we have a third item under new business or under public hearings tonight for adopting an ordinance amendments, chapter one, part administration.
Point of order. Don't we have to vote on the motion to
Sorry.
Close the hearing?
Thank you. Motion to close the hearing. All those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Moore. With that, item C.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to open a public hearing to adopt the an ordinance amendment to chapter one, administration and government. And then it's just notes that it was recommended in committee two.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion to public, open a public hearing and recess the public meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Solicitor.
This is a hearing for an ordinance of the Phoenixville Borough Council, Chester County, Pennsylvania, amending chapter one, administration and government, part four, bureaus, boards, commissions and agencies of the Code of Ordinances of the Borough of Phoenixville. This ordinance amends the section one dash four oh two bureaus, boards, commissions and agencies and provides that the board shall consist of seven persons appointed by Borough Council. That shall serve without compensation. At least six board members shall be residents of the borough at all times. The council member liaison should be appointed as a non-voting member. And upon the expiration of any board member term, a successor shall be appointed by council to serve for the term of four years or until his successor is appointed. A vacancy occurring other than by expiration of term shall be appointed for the unexpired term and shall be filled in the same manner as original appointments. In addition, there shall be staff assistance in section one dash four oh five. The borough manager shall provide assistance as he or she determines appropriate for the commission to implement the duties assigned to it by council. They shall be a non-voting member. This ordinance was duly advertised for a hearing and potential consideration and vote thereon. And with that, I would open it up to any comment from Borough Council. So it's my understanding this is just updating the language based upon the, those, the strike through and edits or was?
BAC basically asked to go from eight members to seven. So since it's a committee, we have to do it through ordinance. So it gets, it gets them to an easier quorum number. it gets it gets them to an easier quorum number. So pretty cut and dry, but do we need it?
We don't, but if it's your pleasure, if you'd like to.
Pretty perfunctory. Any other questions from council?
I would consider a motion to close the public hearing and resume the public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss to close the public hearing and resume the public meeting. Questions on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor.
Hi.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance amendment to chapter one administration and government recommended in committee two zero.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Kirchner to adopt the ordinance as presented. Questions on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor.
Hi.
Opposed. Motion to adopt carries seven zero. And finally, we have a motion, we have an ordinance amendment to consider for chapter fifteen. What is council's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to recess the meeting and open a public hearing to consider a motion to adopt an ordinance amendment to chapter fifteen motor vehicles and traffic recommended in committee two to zero.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor.
Hi.
Opposed. We are now in a public hearing.
It's an ordinance of the Phoenixville Borough Council, Chester County, Pennsylvania, amending chapter fifteen motor vehicles and traffic of the Code of Ordinances of the Borough of Phoenixville. This ordinance revises the one-way road ways established on Church Street, formerly the entire length thereof, now from South Main Street to Star Street. And also repeals and replaces in the entirety section fifteen dash two eleven, which identifies the no drop-off and pickup zones. This ordinance was duly advertised for hearing, consideration and potential vote thereon tonight. I would now open this up for any council question or comment. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing and return to the public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss to close the public hearing and resume the public meeting. All those in favor.
Hi.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. What is council's pleasure for chapter fifteen?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance amendment chapter fifteen motor vehicles and traffic recommended in committee two zero.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor.
Hi.
Motion is adopted, seven zero. Okay, moving on to reports of committees, boards and commissions, Mr. Moore with planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a discussion about a number of projects at the last planning commission meeting, including, and one project was voted on by the planning commission. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the application for the final subdivision and land development plan, basically called Steelworks. That was approved five nothing by the by the commission. This is a plan for, was the consolidation of nine existing parcels on the site and the construction of a multi-story mixed-use building with forty thousand square feet of retail space, three hundred and seventy-five residential units, six hundred and ten parking space with additional street safety improvements and associated stormwater management. This is essentially a significant new development that's being erected on the former Barto Pool property as well as the row houses going along Bridge Street. And there are four waivers that are requested for the project.
Second.
Point of correction, I believe there are five waivers in section one.
I was looking at the action memo.
So the applicant is here tonight for the Steelworks project. I know we we also got some visuals in during the week. If the applicant wants to answer any questions, if council has any questions, this is certainly going to be a a major project. Mr. Demudis, if you want to take the mic. We had a motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Weiss.
Hi, my name is Manny Demudis. We, I'm here on behalf of the Steelworks project. It's a project that we planned, we started planning for in two thousand and six and then it will, let me describe where it is. It's it's the abandoned ruins of the Wile and Meat Packing Plant and all of basically all of the abandoned buildings that are just just to the left, to the east of of I'm sorry, to the west of of Uncle B's, everything to the substation. So at one time, the entirety of the five acres was covered in turn of the century meatpacking and ice making. And over the years fell in disrepair. In twenty sixteen, we we put a plan together and received preliminary approval from Borough, from the Borough to create an essence of this plan. It's very similar in nature to Phoenix Village. Some of the features of it are that we're made, we're recreating the streetscape, we're widening Bridge Street. We're taking, we're taking Hall Street from where it sits on Bridge, eventually all the way up to Paradise Street. And the hopes and the desires there is that becomes an active, it'll be a vehicular street, but it's also an active walking street. And we see that whereas as soon as you make the bend across from Nudie's, you know, Bridge Street kind of becomes a highway, right? And it gets much faster. And we start losing the character of the walkable one hundred, two hundred, three hundred block of Bridge Street. So through the planning process, we created Hall Street. So in essence, the business district will continue down, will continue up, up Hall Street. And really not impact a lot. I mean, I've heard a lot of the great comments and well-thought-out comments today on, you know, on all the various issues that we have before us as a borough. And they're they're well thought out, whether you agree with them or not. And so one of the, this is, this this idea of this new Hall Street with cleaning up all of that. All that, all those dilapidated buildings, something that again, we've been attempting to do since two thousand and six. We were still, we were derailed by the Great Recession of two thousand and eight. We were derailed by COVID in in twenty twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. So we're here. It is our intention to start immediately. We have a lot of public art. We have a pocket park. We have our self-contained parking, but we also have public parking. And it's the great thing about these projects, if you see Phoenix Village, because everything is on a slope, you don't see the parking. So it's not, one of the best, one of the great advantages that we have to the rolling hills of Chester County is that you can hide the parking under the building. And so what you're presented with at the streetscape level is a storefront. And so we have that same condition at at Barto. When you you start from the substation, the ground starts dropping pretty rapidly till you get to the bend. And then it drops an additional six or eight feet from the bend to Hall Street. As also a part of our approval, we're reworking the the massive part of the stormwater. There's an old seventy-two inch storm culvert that collects most of the water from the other side of the borough. And so that's all going to be piped and put and and put underground. So it's a, gonna be a, it's a, it's gonna be a dramatic change to that area. It's a redevelopment site, so we're recycling the ground that is currently there. And it's going to it's gonna create jobs. I mean, one of the things that we started out twenty, twenty-five, thirty-five years ago was the whole idea of creating jobs. The same architect is the same architect that did the Iron Hill Building for us, did Phoenix Village, and he did the Sage Building on either side of the Columbia. So he's done, he's done a really great job. And if, you know, for us, you can see those properties. And this gives us a great opportunity to continue our public art on our buildings, whether it's the kite runner at Saltane or it's the Phoenix at above Sedona. And so we're very much looking forward to starting this project and getting that and recreating that whole side of town.
Questions for the applicant?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. President, I I see on the action memo there's one waiver to not show existing trees with a calable, caliper greater than six inches. Is is that because a lot of those trees have grown in what was once a meat plant?
Yeah, factory floor.
Yeah. Yeah, so and they're probably trash trees at that.
I mean, we'll try to save them if you want.
That was something that just jumped out at me and I thought, you know, knowing that that lot was covered with a, I mean, ever since I came here nineteen seventy-nine. It it's been like that. So.
Ever since I was a kid.
It wouldn't surprise me that, you know, there are a lot of, a lot of trees just grew up where there used to be a factory.
So. Yeah, that's the reason.
And and there is, in the action memo, there's line three, and you may not know this because you don't write the action memo, but the the third item on the first page says, starts, a sentence starts based on and then it just ends. And there is nothing.
Sounds like I wrote it though.
It says the preliminary plan was approved with the condition that Hall Street's facade be architecturally developed, period, based on. Well, well, I know, we we did provide, we did provide the corner of we did provide the corner of Hall and Bridge and what that looks like. And it's very similar to the, back to where our our residence garage is and our service area. The the, that I think the best part of this project and the fun part about this project is we, with the borough, are creating an idea for Hall Street. And so from up to that garage area, we have not, those plans have not been developed. But so, you know, there's there's talk of permanency of the fire, of the farmer's market. There's talk of a retail incubator that that we've been talking about for years. So there's lots of, there's I mean, the borough is, we're providing emergency access to the new fire company, but and it will be, it will be a vehicular road, but I don't think we'll get into some of the same issues that we see tonight with with concern because we're not impacting residents. We're not impacting businesses. And the businesses are there, one will be, are, you know, looking forward to being impacted. So, I mean, because that's the, that's the nature of the street. For twenty-eight, okay. Oh, you know, if I may just clarify that, in the resolution that my concern was that there was something in the resolution that referred to the to the action memo and the action memo having an incomplete sentence in it. However, the resolution does have that waiver spelled out in it. So since we're working, approving the resolution, we're covered there. So thank you for indulging my thinking on the fly.
I'm glad you're reading it that thoroughly. And as with all of our our action memos, minor language cleanups are always you know, in our purview to do when it come to grammatical things like that. Mr. Moore.
Yeah, if if I could, any, and maybe we should bring up the architectural renderings. Why don't you just try to describe a little bit, because there's some pretty nice designs, so that people, that the public and everybody here at council can see exactly how you envision this this structure being built and what it will look like.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so maybe.
So this is, believe it or not. This is this. So this right now is Hall Street. And so the reason that you see so this is, so this is Hall Street, this is Bridge Street, Nudie's is here, and we have about an eight-foot slope from this corner to this corner. And we have about a five, six-foot slope from this corner to this corner. This corner is approximately fourteen feet higher than this corner. So what we did to do, so what we did to, a couple of things, how we took advantage of how we take it, how we're taking advantage of the the drop in slope. We're parking all of our parking is underneath this building that you, and you won't be able to see because it will either be hidden by by storefront or it'll be hidden by plantings and or it'll be hidden by a pocket park here at the corner of Bridge and Hall. We also have a we also have a nineteen thousand square foot amenity deck, retail deck. So this is all wrapped in stores, of which we have about sixteen thousand square feet spoken for already. And it'll be fun stuff that you'll see. And so this is the, this is open to the public. This is an open to the public kind of internal square. So you're able to instead of being on the sidewalk, you'll be able to access, you'll be able to access three or four restaurants from the inside of that square. It's also the main entrance to the lobby. Now, believe it or not, these are apartment units, but this is a rendering. This isn't a rendering, this is a mural. That's, that's not part of, that's not part of the building. It's it's really cool. And then we have a big space, we have a big space right here, and we have a big space right here for public art. So this is this public, this is this pocket park right here. And then this is New Hall Street. And this is our service area hidden by, and then this is gonna be public art, and this is gonna be public art. And then, once we get down Hall Street, we're gonna look, we have about twenty-five, I think right now, we're gonna end up with like twenty-five to thirty-five feet. And we, it would encourage, whether it's permanent farmer's market or whatever, to line up on that street and we'll we'll be providing permanent electric, permanent water, which is something that they don't have.
And then there's, if you could go back like all the way up Bridge Street. So there's, there's retail all along.
There's retail from the substation all the way down Bridge Street. And 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 wraps the corner here at all. So it'll be the, it's the next continuation, right? So when they, when they, when Root Down did their second location, they took an abandoned building and they fixed it up, created a beer garden. Our beer garden just happens to be internal to the structure. We also have another twenty thousand square foot private amenity area. So this is, this is very, this is almost identical to the Sedona deck. And if you're walking up, if you're walking up from the superintendent's building, that's what you'll see.
Dean, I have the question that I'd actually like you to weigh in on, which is the discussion about the Hill Street extension that that they're going to be building and the commitment date that the developer has for the Hall Street. That both the temporary and eventually the, the permanent one.
While we're made waiting, Manny, could, do you know about how many parking spaces you're planning on providing in that parking area?
Inside the building six, ten. Okay, so hopefully, yeah, you can see this, this, this slide here. This is the area that you're, you're in essence. From here to about, right about there, right Manny?
Yes.
This area right here, all of this. Is part of the project, if council is inclined tonight to approve. The road would be built today as part of this project right to here.
Permanent, yeah.
Permanently.
Yeah.
The, as a condition of approval, he has agreed to work with his, his team and others. To take this road all the way out to Paradise Street. Which if you know where the location here is DeSano Field. And over here is where the new fire station that were built into Six Bay Fire Station. This is French Creek. And there's a bridge right here going across French Creek through Smithworks Boulevard back out to Main Street. So the idea is we're creating a grid system. That not only functions to the service, everything that's going on here, but. A tremendously supportive roadway for emergency services for the ambulance service, EMS service and, and fire service that comes out of here. They can go out this way to the north, they can come out this way to the west and they can go. Through here and hit the center of town. So there's, we're trying to create a grid system for all of these activities. And the owner of this property currently would only really have access right here off of Paradise Street. What this does is it creates the opportunity for the, the owner of this property, working with Mr. Demunis in this project. By building this road, it creates a, a different perspective and, and opportunity for them to. To utilize this property. It looks like there's a lot there, but believe you me, there's, it's not, there's not much distance between where we're at here. We had to take out all of these, this area here for Pico in order to put in the. Proper power lines to come back here to the substate or back, actually back over here to the substation. And come back across through that area. So the real developable area is right here. Off of this roadway, but he is by the condition of approval, a condition of approval, he will design, engineer and construct that.
And we'll hide the substation from one side. Oh, and we're bringing, and, and we are gonna bring the, you know, if you drive up. If you drive up that road, you'll notice that there's telephone poles and electrical poles everywhere. And it's our intention to bring them underground on, on our side of the street.
On, on your side of Bridge Street?
That's correct. From, from the substation all the way down.
But currently there's telephone poles all along here on, on Bridge Street. Those will all disappear.
Yep. They will.
Questions for the applicant? This is a pretty major project and we're. It'll be a nice bookend to Bridge Street. And help stretch out our existing downtown, Mr. Weiss.
Yeah, I believe there was mention that there would be parking for residents, but also some public parking. Can you expand on that a bit?
Yeah, so. In, in this district, you create the amount of parking that the market tells you you need, right? So what we've. We, we actually went heavy on this, but we're at one and a half spaces per apartment. With the majority of those apartments being one bedroom apartments, right? So, so that gives us a little. And then we're, that gives us a little fudge room, okay? And then we have an additional. Public parking for the retail. Which is another. Forty. It's a number, it's maybe a hundred and ten, hundred and twenty. So if you want to shop there or you want to specifically go there, and then we have an additional, I think. Sixty or so that, that are open to, that would be, that would be open, paid parking to the public.
Great, thank you very much.
And we don't, and I have, we haven't even calculated the parking along Hall yet. But we will.
What would the intention of the parking on Hall be?
Public.
Okay.
I just wanted to circle back to the substation. So I know you said you were going to screen on one side. Is there an opportunity to maybe?
You go away?
Screen it better, I guess. I don't know if that's, you know.
Cause I, I can tell you, I've had. An unbelievable number of discussions in over fourteen years here with Pico and. They, they basically throw the homeland security at us, which is if, if they hide it, then it becomes a different kind of problem. And so it's, it, they have to keep it open.
We've tried and tried and tried and tried. Maybe someday we'll get it moved. I don't know. I mean, they, for, for five years, they wouldn't move the poles, even though we were paying for them to go underground. Like we were paying to move the poles underground, they weren't paying for it.
I'll also offer that as liaison on planning commission, this has been through some really extensive discussions. Bridge Street is a state highway, so. The traffic pattern on Bridge Street there, the whole length of it, two hall street. Will be redesigned in, under the direction essentially of Penn Dot. And there'll be, you know, there'll be lights and traffic control in there. And as I understand it, so, because we did ask about that and it's. It's not something you can actually control. You have to follow what, what they want to, how they will want to engineer. There was an extensive traffic, traffic impact study done and there are a set of recommendations around those. So traffic. Is addressed, parking, I think has been addressed. And it is true that we are, one of the waivers is to be building in a floodplain. Now. There were buildings already there in a floodplain. And if you could tell us a little bit, that, that, one of the most significant discussions is.
Yeah.
The storm sewer will be significantly rebuilt by you.
That's correct. So Phoenix Village is in a floodplain, Superintendent's Building is in a floodplain. You know, so the, with the development of Steel Point, they dropped the flood elevation, right? But that, that hasn't gone into effect yet. So this building will be artificially raised by approximately two feet. And the, and the entirety out of the flood, out of the floodplain, all the mechanicals and everything. And when we were at, and in, and even though our neighbors got unindated with the last hurricane, Phoenix Village never, never had a breach. I mean, we had to empty our, we had to open up our doors like a bathtub so it would leave, but it never came back through. So you can effectively, you can effectively build in a floodplain and, and do it safely.
I, I have a question. When do you think this will, you'll put this into the ground?
Working backwards, we are applying for financing. And it's a really heavy lift. But we, we're applying for financing the second week in April. It's about a ninety day. And then a ninety day process. And, but Phoenixville is, it's an easy sell. It's not like before. And, and then we're hoping our architects can get. Everything onboard August. I mean, we have the biggest, the biggest lift is, is. Getting them to create the construction documents detailed enough so that the borough. Building inspector can review them and it's, it's a lot of review. It's, it takes a lot of time. So we're thinking, we're hoping August.
How fast would the slaughterhouse be demolished?
Be at first base. I mean, I, I think.
By August.
Well, it'd have to, I mean, so the only, the, the. The work plan is to power lines. Demolish. Okay. So, and I'm not sure, we may have to demolish and then power lines, but it's one, it's, it's obviously you've got to grade the sites, the first thing that gets done.
One other thing in terms of demolition. There are still people living.
Yeah, so what we're doing.
Houses there.
Yeah, so what, when we first bought the property, there was a big concern from council that we would. We'd be, we'd be displacing the folks that live there. And so. We have, we are. Our other team is placing them now. And, and finding them, you know, finding, you know, finding the placement for them instead of.
In the borough or just kind of locally or?
Wherever, wherever we can. I mean, but we're, we're actively doing, we're actively participating in that.
Any other questions from council? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six, one.
Thank you.
Anything else from planning commission, Mr. Moore?
Uh, yes, thank you very much for reminding me earlier, the draft Borough Comprehensive Plan Update. Very major, significant document. You can download it from the homepage under news of the Phoenixville Borough site. It's a. It's, I started working through it this weekend myself. We will be discussing it. As, as part of the planning commission beginning at six PM Thursday night. Everybody asks questions, why do we make decisions the way we do? They're based upon the zoning, which is based upon the planning, based upon the comprehensive plan. So this is our readdressing of that and we, we are looking forward to everyone. Making further contributions to, to the ideas and suggestions in it. It's a, it's an attempt to manage the various growth challenges. So I invite everyone to read it. It's a lot. It's got a lot of interesting data about who we are and what we are at this point. Ultimately, that plan goes through the commission and then just to us or does it go to anywhere else?
It is, it is currently under review by the Chester County Planning Commission as well as the Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee. They'll have their input, we'll have that input as well as the information from Thursday's meeting for Borough Council and. A presentation we made at the April twelfth meeting prior to any adoption of, of that plan. It has also been sent to all of the regional municipalities around us, as well as the school district for their review.
That's it for planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. With that, Ms. Dugan from, for Harb.
There was no, nothing that wasn't on the consent agenda.
Very good. Mr. Kirchner with Regional Planning Committee.
Nothing of consequence. We have enough to do, to go through tonight that I won't bog it down.
Very good. Ms. Dugan with Rec Board.
Uh, in the interest of time, I'm going to just let you know that there is. We have a lot of programs that are still going on, but there's nothing new as far as that you haven't heard of before. So I'll just run through them really quickly. All of this is available on phoenixville.org on the Parks and Rec page. There is the Family Fizz Ed, that's on March the sixth and the twentieth. Soccer Shot Spring Season Begins March twenty sixth, registration is open for that too. Jump Start Sports T-Ball Begins in Early April. The Snapology Spring Session Begins Mid-April. Camp Registration Opens Monday, March seventh. The Gingerbread House Registration is now open for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three year. And the Adult Softball Registration is now open.
And we open a new rec building next month.
Yeah, that's happening too.
Okay, open house April thirtieth, be there.
With that, we have, uh, I don't believe there's anything to report out for PAC. Okay. With Tree Advisory Commission.
We did not meet last month, so we'll meet again next Monday.
Okay, moving right along. With that, we'll move on to council action referred by council committees. First up, we have our Police Personnel Public Safety Committee, Ms. Berkeley.
Yes, so right back to me, we do have two openings and I would like to, I, I believe both. Applicants are actually with us, so if they want to speak, they've hung on for a while. So even if they just want to say hi. Allow them to do that, but I would make an appointment, a motion to appoint Reverend Lee Paxzula. And then reappoint Heather Byrd to the Human Relations Commission. And thank you, they both joined us yesterday and then hung out with us tonight.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss to appoint and reappoint. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Ms. Berkeley.
I'd also like to make a motion to reappoint Tom Carnaval. I'm sure he is on, as he said he would be, to Planning Commission.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. And that's for a term expiring.
I'm so sorry, it wasn't on.
Do we need that for the motion or, okay, never mind. We used to do that. Sorry, Ms. Berkeley.
Um, so we do have one more opening and we have two applicants, one of which is with us here today and I believe Mr. Bowers is with us virtually. We'll start with our applicants. Oh, Mr. Bowers, I didn't see you back there. Hello, thanks for joining us. So I would invite them to come and address council, allow council to ask some questions and then we'll go from there. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for your time. My name is Joe Sikora. I live, I'm a resident at Steel Point and I am grateful to be here. I have a little bit about myself. I'd like to take a moment. I know it's been a long evening and I appreciate your patience, but I, I know you're more familiar with the other candidate. And I'd like to take a minute to explain to some of the folks that weren't here that last evening. The, the reason that I'm here and the reason that I like to apply publicly. For this opportunity. So in, in any case. Brief history of my, my background. I was born and raised in the city of Pittsburgh and my grandfathers were both immigrants. They both came over here and they worked in the coal mining business and the steel business. My father spent his twenty-three years to thirty years of, in, in, uh, working in a rolling mill. Which is exactly what is over in, in Steel Point where I live right now. So steel towns are in my blood and I think that that's important in, in this regard because of the fact that, you know, as. As Phoenixville had to reinvent itself in the eighties. I had to reinvent myself in the eighties because of what Pittsburgh went through and what, what we had to do. So I, 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 I put myself through college working. In a steel mill and literally doing the job that's behind you right there that's, that's on the mural. And, and I think that's unique because it ties me to this town and, but it also shows. What, what happens when you have the chance to have, have an opportunity to shift. From, from what, what maybe a community was used to into another realm. I decided to get my undergraduate from a high university and then my masters at Ashland. College and go into the world of technology because of the fact that like. Other steel towns, they, they put their, their hopes into technology and some other areas. My career is a little state on my resume that I presented to you. I, I grew into a senior management from some pretty nice tech companies. And then I started down the entrepreneurial path in around two thousand nineteen ninety-eight. I, I bring that up because I think it's very relative. To what's going on with the planning commission and, and, and how it can be of value. I bootstrapped three companies. One was a demand response company that, that was so, it was very pro-green and, and was very important to me. Because I knew what it meant to communities. Another, another small restaurant and small business that I hadn't skipped back, which was a, a European bakery and cafe that was around for eight years. And, and as you'll see, some, some pretty large and, and bootstrap nice company that was eventually sold to a large telecommunications company. That went from zero to three hundred fifty million dollars in about five years. So I've been fortunate. So I've been fortunate. What I'd like to do for for this community is, since I believe that I could rate, relate to small businesses and because I believe that I can relate to, um, large businesses, I have a unique set of negotiating skills that I I think can help. Um, giving you an example of one of those negotiating skills, I don't know if you got up today and you Googled Phoenixville like I often do first thing in the morning, but you would have seen from the Philadelphia Inquirer, an article about the great city and all the amazing work that you did. And it features my beautiful fiancee, if you have a chance to say beautiful and fiancee in a public record, you absolutely take that opportunity. Um, it it talks about our life here in town, originally was supposed to be about Rockwell and Steel Point. But quickly, when we had the chance to talk to the reporter and and discuss this town, the the quickly, the commentary came to, this is an amazing place and this is what we're doing the story on, if you have a chance to read it, it'll be in the Haven and the Inquirer on Sunday in print, but it's online right now. It mentions our amazing honorable mayor and all the unique things that he's done and all the great work that you've done. So in in a nutshell, and I know that you have questions and I and it's been a long evening, I want you to at least get an idea of where I came from. I I can relate to that guy because I was that guy. And, um, what you've done to this community, I appreciate it, it's in my DNA, it's literally in my blood. Like I said, my uncle worked here. Um, I've had family members pass working in the steel industry and, um, and so what you're trying to do from a diversity perspective going forward, a technology perspective going forward, and 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 some of the other things that could be brought to this town that maybe hasn't been yet, I I believe I can be of benefit to, thank you.
Thank you, Joe, any questions for our applicant?
Have you ever been involved in any other kind of municipal planning process or any organization?
Really good question, I'm sorry, really good question, a couple of things, um. I I have not, but I can tell you, it's really funny that you mentioned the comprehensive plan because I spent a tremendous amount of time today. Here's page forty-four, which really hit me strong, going over one hundred and twenty-two slides and how amazing of a plan it was, and if you folks haven't had a chance to read about your community, please take the chance to do that because this plan is significant, it's deep, it's detailed, and it's unique. One of the things that I love to do is partner with you all to help get this plan executed over the next ten years because it's incredible and I believe in it and it's very unique. So no, I haven't, but I I, if that answers your question, thank you. Good evening.
Hi. Yinz or use?
Yeah, right, you know, first of all, there's a rumor going around that I want to change the language in Phoenixville, we will not be, I would not be a proponent of being a yinzzer, even though that's why. Yeah, there's a funny story, but we don't have the time to go into it tonight, but but yes.
I just, just don't take my water from.
I believe in Wawa oversheds too, if you're asking, just for the record. Funny. Anything else I can help you with or any other questions you have about my background? Because this is somewhat of a vulnerable situation, but I'm happy to share it with such a great town.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Mr. Bowers, I think.
Good evening, Council President, Councilwoman, Councilman, thank you for having me this evening. Uh, my name is Chris Bowers, resident of, uh, the North Ward, live in the Ledges Community, been on Planning Commission for some time, and I suppose, you know, I really view it as, uh, you know, our job to fully vet projects that get presented to you, uh, so that, um, you are informed by the debates and discussions that we've had on Planning Commission, and you're able to then, um, understand, um, you know, what's in, you know, we want to leave it on the table for what's in your purview to then fully decide and and vote on. So, you know, I think my time on Planning Commission is, I just simply want to promote the lines of discussion that are of, uh, concern and interest of council or of, uh, concern and interest of our community and our residents. So, um, you know, curb sidewalks, infrastructure, open space. You know, much of that's written in the zoning and written in the ordinance, but much of it is vague, much of it is not. So, you know, we try to hold those discussions to flush out, um, uh, you know, what the developers intend to do uh, in their projects and try and, uh, push and prod and, um, take them in a direction uh, that is, where we get a project that is of the best, isn't of the best interest of the community. So, um, thank you, any questions?
Questions from, uh, from council?
Having been on the the commission for a while, um, and, I mean, I've been liaison for two years, what would you say you think the commission needs to do going forward, either with the plan or in general, in terms of managing some of the concerns about growth and some of the concerns about, you know, the changing character of the of the borough?
Mm-hmm. Well, I think what's been, you know, difficult for all of us to, um, uh, fully understand is that many projects come that have come before you for votes have been originally filed under prior, um, you know, uh, prior saldo or prior zoning, so they've been a challenge. We're, I think we're at a point now where we're seeing some projects in planning mission that are under current, you know, current zoning, current saldo. So we have a little more, we have some more tools in planning commission to push for open space uh, that that weren't in some of the prior projects you saw. So, um, you know, that's, that's what we want to do, want to do is we want to fully utilize the ordinances in front of us and but leave on the table what is certainly within the purview of council to to decide.
Other questions from council?
Thank you very much, Rick.
Thanks, Chris. As as a vacancy on a, uh, order committee or commission, this can actually also go to executive commission or executive, um, session if this is something that, um, council wished to do later in the agenda, uh, Ms. Dugan.
Just a real quick question, is this an a reappointment or an appointment, or is it just one spot this up? I'm just kind of confused.
So there were two vacancies, uh, one was reappointed, uh, Mr. Carnaval was reappointed.
Okay.
And then, uh, with the two applicants for the other vacancy, which is, uh, what we're currently debating.
Okay.
Uh, I'll, I'll make a motion to, um, uh, to appoint Mr. Sikora to the, uh, position.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Mr. Kirchner, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries five two. I will. Anything else out of Police Personnel and Public Safety? Mr. Moore with Parks and Rec.
All right, um, I'm going to take item number two first, just to kind of get it out of the way. Um, and three, yeah, uh, so, uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve a temporary community event application for the annual Dogwood Festival, ready that it's back from May eighteenth through May twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, um, in Reeves Park, streets to be closed, our second and third avenue between Main and Star Streets throughout the the event. Uh, this, uh, temporary community event application also covers the Dogwood Parade, Franklin Avenue between Gilmore Street and Bridge Street, Grant Street, Beverly Street and Iron Street, and the two hundred and four hundred block of Bridge Street and Main Street from Bridge Street to Fifth Avenue, eleven P. M. to two P. M. on Saturday, May twenty-fourth for the parade. Uh, this was recommended in committee, uh, three, three zero.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Weiss for the, uh, the return of Dogwood. Uh, the full application is in our packets, um, all the new updates to this year's proposal are presented therein. Are there any questions on the proposal as it has been submitted and motioned? Or any descriptions or questions that we have, I believe, is the applicant here tonight? Okay, so if there's questions for the applicant, I believe they may be, uh, joining us via Zoom. Talking Dogwood, yep, yeah, we we skipped item two, we're going to knock out two and three and then go back to one. Sorry, you didn't miss it. Okay. No other questions, uh, from council, all those in favor for the return of Dogwood?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero, Mr. Moore.
In, I'm. In a community event application, the bed races event on Saturday, November fifth, twenty twenty-two, from eleven A. M. to two P. M. Third Avenue to be closed between Main Street and Star Street from nine A. M. to two P. M., recommended in committee, three zero.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Weiss for the, uh, return of the bed races. Questions on this motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Abstained, motion carries six zero one, Mr. Moore.
Zooming our discussion, like to make a motion to approve the temporary community, oh, sorry, am I reading the wrong thing here? I am, I apologize. I'd like to make a motion to like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two open air setup, the one hundred and two hundred blocks of Bridge Street each weekend beginning Friday, May sixth, twenty twenty-two, and ending Monday, November seventh, twenty twenty-two, recommended in committee, three zero.
Second.
So this was a motion that was, uh, brought forward, uh, sorry, motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Weiss. Uh, this is a motion that we had, uh, essentially tabled last month, brought back to committee and are now reexamining. Um, who would like to kick off discussion tonight? Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Uh, everyone, I know this is a slightly unorthodox, uh, for me to kick off a discussion, certainly I am a non-voting member of this body unless it ended in a tie, and that does not look possible tonight. Um, but what I do want to say is that, um, I know it can sometimes be very difficult for audience members, especially those who are at home or who are here with us, um, because of the way our format is set up, it doesn't necessarily appear that we're able to, uh, converse with you and have a conversation around some of the items, um, that you may be bringing forward. And so I wanted to best kind of, uh, encapsulate or summarize some of the major items that have been, uh, discussed and give you some of the borough perspectives on those items, so you can just have more information. And this is really for the public as well as for the Borough Council. So as many of you know, certainly this was done in, this was done as a response to COVID nineteen originally, um, that we needed more space for restaurants and other retail establishments. The timing of the closure specifically, as it was mentioned today, many people ask, why does the closure take place on Friday afternoon at two P. M. and go until Monday morning? The reason for the closure is that there is a significant cost that was incurred by the borough in order to do the closure, purchasing the barricades, purchasing the equipment that we needed, as well as there's a significant labor cost associated with actually closing the street down. And I do want to make a little caveat, there are certainly different types of street closures. Some use what you see sometimes, the bicycle barricade, which is very easy, I could pick it up by myself and move it over. Because of the nature of this closure, we use a significantly heavier, as in, we need to bring a front end loader down from our streets department in order to close it. So to reduce the cost of the closure, we essentially make sure that it's done during our normal operating hours so that our staff can actually come here and they don't need to be brought in in overtime, and they also don't need to take up their weekend to do the closure. It can take up to eight staff members, if anyone's ever been there or had the pleasure at two P. M. to see it being closed. It can take up to eight staff members to actually close that, so you can imagine a significant cost that could be incurred should that take place during overtime or on the weekends. Again, we're maximizing public safety, um, at the same time, and that's why we use these specific type of barricades. Um, here, here we are today, right? And I think this is something we certainly discussed multiple times, I just again want to reiterate that we are looking at this in a different perspective, this is no longer as a result of COVID, but instead looking to create a destination within the borough of Phoenixville. We also are a community that's growing, and certainly with those growing pains comes parking and infrastructure. Just came out recently, we are the thirteenth fastest growing municipality in Pennsylvania. From two thousand ten to two thousand twenty, we increased our population by two thousand three hundred and fifty-three people, or fourteen five point five percent. Our current population is around eighteen thousand six hundred and two people, making us the thirty-sixth largest municipality in Pennsylvania. How important is that? There are currently two thousand five hundred and sixty municipalities, we are in the top two percent for population. Just today, I, you know, Joe, you brought up that great article that came out today, people are talking about what we do in Phoenixville. There was also an incredible article that came out yesterday talking about walkability and the push for town developments to start to stop thinking about cars as they once had done in parking and move towards thinking of the small town and how we can walk around that small town. From a safety perspective, the street closure relies on multiple departments, including our police fire and EMS. All of these departments were, they were, um, they worked together, staff worked together to ensure that these closures would allow for the appropriate response from our fire, our police and our EMS. The, um, if if you walk down the closure, if you see how the barricades are set up, if you look down the center, there are not tables ever in the center of the street, and that is to ensure that emergency vehicles can respond as they have had to respond during the closure in the past, and so they are able to do so. I will say that we are continuing to improve this as we go along. Our new full-time fire chief is working in conjunction with our, of course, our new newly appointed police chief and our EMS to enhance the protocols and training specifically for all the individuals who may have to respond to the closures themselves. In twenty twenty-one, we received a significant grant to install permanent bollards. So if many of you are familiar with the barricades or bollards that are at the corner of Main and Church Street that can be picked up and brought out of the ground, um, they are essentially a lot easier to move. These new barricades or bollards would be done in the same style, but they would be significantly more advanced and would actually be able to have a significant more impact on stopping of the vehicles, should it accidentally run into them. Um, so there's that project, and you'll see it later in the agenda, is currently undergoing engineering. There was a, there's been a conversation around the need to make the street closure special. And certainly, I just want to say, over the last two years, we have not been able to do any events, we are starting to see those events come up. Now, we did not calculate it in the same way, I know a number of people have discussed the street, uh, events. There are twenty-seven total weekends, uh, during the street closure. Eighteen or sixty-seven percent of those weekends already have some form of event, including the events that were approved tonight or tentative events that are warranting some form of closure or traffic diversion. I'm not going to guarantee that it's exactly the one hundred or two hundred block, but I'm just saying in general that there does warrant some type of traffic diversion. If the street closure was to be moved, then it would require those organizations who are requesting those closures, if not within the one hundred and two hundred block, if we were to not, uh, move forward, they would have additional costs. And those organizations have been informed that the, uh, the costs of the street closures are pending tonight's decision. Um, obviously, as a borough, we want to continue to work with Phoenixville first to bring music and activities back down to First Fridays. I said this during the, um, Parks and Recreation Meeting, but I look at it, can we turn every day, every weekend in the borough of Phoenixville into a First Friday? Let's, let's draw the same revenue at that same level. The closure also allows for a unique org, you know, a unique opportunity for organizations to host specialized events in the downtown where they may have not been able to in the past. Parking issues, we love parking, and I know that, uh, you know, our dear friend John, I've spoken to him at length, um, back in the nineteen seventies, uh, when nobody was in Phoenix still, they were already talking about parking and infrastructure issues. We continue to have those same issues. I will say that today we have four hundred and nine, I'm not counting borough, I'm not counting the one hundred and two hundred blocks. We have four hundred and nine borough-owned parking spaces through our parking lots within the downtown. In April of two thousand and twenty-one, we increased the number of parking spots, and I'll explain this in a second, by thirty-two percent. Again, April twenty twenty-one, we increased it by thirty-two percent. Now, we did that by taking over the management of other parking lots. And what's unique in that situation is now those lots are managed by the borough, they're managed by our parking authority. This is the lot specifically I'm talking about, is behind customers' bank. It makes it easier for people to understand, it's on all of our parking directories, and you can use the same passport parking system. That was a hundred and thirty-one spots. Um, so now we have a total of five hundred and forty. By June of this year, we will add another hundred and twenty, and this time they are real, brand new spots. We will have another hundred and twenty new spots added to our public parking inventory, again, through a managed program similar to the one we have with Customers Bank, which will bring us to six hundred and sixty spots, or again, a twenty-two percent increase in parking in the downtown. We also continue to work with our nonprofit partners who own lots in the downtown areas to make those lots more accessible and easier to use. And by the summer, we will have close to three hundred and ten donation parking spots in the downtown. Meaning that those are owned by private churches, they're owned by private nonprofits, but those are spots that they've dedicated and they want to, as part of their mission, help to make those spots available to Phoenixville, and we're helping to guide them to make those more accessible through online means. On any given weekend, we have approximately eight hundred, this is without the one hundred and twenty. We have approximately eight hundred and fifty spots between the borough-owned managed and donation spots. This is an area that we will continue to improve upon, and we're working with our parking enforcement, of course, to improve our parking enforcement. And we will continue to work with other owners of large parking lots or spaces in Phoenixville where we could have parking so that we could have more of those management agreements. Obviously, one of the things that we hope that we can do as a community is continue to work together to promote these unique parking spaces to our visitors and also help them access things like the online parking app, et cetera, et cetera. Our ADA accessibility, this is again an area of significant concern, as many of our storefronts are not ADA accessible. And we have heard a variety of perspectives, both for and against, that the street closure in some ways does actually help individuals who may be in wheelchairs. For example, we had a gentleman, Paul, who came to the Parks and Recreation meeting, he's a quadriplegic and said that he was very fortunate to be able to use the street closure because he could easily roll and get down the street. Now, on the other hand, it does make it challenging to drop people off in, in front of specific locations for those who may not be, who may not necessarily qualify for a handicap placard, but who would benefit from having the ability to get right into a storefront. So, you know, that can make it more difficult, so we can see the pros and cons on both sides of this. Now, one of the things that we are working to do is replace any handicap spots that we would lose on the closure of the Bridge Street with spots in either the Mill Street Lot or spots on Main Street that would allow for easier access. The Mill Street Lot specifically would allow for easier access to the Colonial Theater through Children's Plaza. And so the idea is we could use some of those spaces there as ADA handicap spots. These are, again, just potential ideas that we are working through. We're also working to evaluate the potential of drop-off and pickup points that can make it a little easier. And then we are evaluating in conjunction with other municipalities as well as local organizations on the potential of using small shuttles. Not necessarily a large school bus, but shuttles like an eight-person golf cart, for example, that could make rounds around the community and help people who may need a little additional support getting from one place to another. Traffic, again, traffic, it is a challenge, I live right on Bridge Street, I promise you, I'm in the middle of it all the time. Working, we are working with the feedback that has been provided so that we can look at additional traffic calming measures, specifically at Star and Bridge Street, Prospect Street, Church Street, and the intersection of Church and Star Streets, along with Washington Street. One of the pieces that we would like to do is do further analysis of and evaluate our rush hour and closure, as well as put out devices that will check for speed as well as traffic volume on key routes so that we can actually have a better idea of where the traffic is going and how quickly and how many people. And one of the large things that we will do, and I'm guilty of this myself, but is to encourage the walkability for all of those who live within walking distance of the downtown. Take a chance, if you can, walk down there, don't be moving your car and taking up another spot. And of course, I, I would say at the end of the day, traffic is most greatly impacted by our population growth. If only a quarter of the people in that population growth represented a car, there are six hundred new cars on the road right now in the borough of Phoenixville. Another piece that was discussed was advertising, and again, this will be the first year that we have actively promoted the street closure to those outside of the Phoenixville community, and this would be done in a similar way to what we had done pre-pandemic with a combination of web, radio, newspaper, and social media efforts. And finally, I just, you know, a constant, I think there are some things to improve, and then I'll do my call. But, you know, certainly, I think we need to look specifically at more of the criteria around weather cancellations if this were to move through. And just so you know, too, the bollard system would help this greatly, of course, that won't be in place immediately, but the bollard system allows for less individuals to come down to take out those bollards and reopen streets without the need for a front-end loader. I think at the end of the day, certainly, whatever happens and whatever decision is made, we do have to work together and continue our partnerships with the Chamber and with PABA. Of course, we need to look at our business hours, you know, it brings up a really good point. Are people able to go into a shop when they're finished dining at one of our restaurants? Because these restaurants are full of people and they need something to do when they're done. You know, are we able to keep up consistent participation in all of these programs? And then what, what kind of creative things can we do during the closure, specifically around engaging people in specific types of businesses? Can we do fashion shows, home shows? And then finally, what can we all jointly do to educate our customers and potential customers on places to park and technologies to make parking a little more easier? And of course, how do we cross-promote as a community? So those are my little summaries, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Risher.
Um, I don't even know where to begin with this. First of all, this road is not meant for a thorough, it's, it's a thoroughfare, it's not meant for this. And in order to get up this road all the time, you have to, and then you block it off all the time. All of the side streets are getting completely jammed with all of this, and I've heard people mention about the, the pollution and everything that like, you know, it's just not as nice. They did not expect that when they bought their homes or rented their apartments, that's not what they expected. And I only think that we were supposed to do this for the pandemic. I am willing to meet people halfway and do like maybe once a month or something, but doing it every weekend is so overkill. I haven't been downtown in two years because I'm handicapped. So I find this absolutely, you're not taking into consideration all the other things. This town was not designed to shut down that road, it doesn't make any sense. So I'm obviously not going to vote for this.
Thank you, Ms. Dugan. Mr. Moore.
I'll go, I'll go. So I am probably somewhere in the middle. I see the vision for the downtown, and I understand the challenges that it presents. I think that, you know, I've engaged with a bunch of businesses in residence in the last couple of weeks, and I think the common thread is we can make this work, but maybe we should just dial it back a little bit. So I'm hoping that we can discuss some sort of compromise, whether taking it down to less weekends or pausing it in the summer like we suggested before. Maybe less days of the weekend, I know that presents a challenge, but I feel strongly about dialing it back a little bit. But I do see the vision, and I do think it is something that can be unique, and we can grow into it, too, so.
I want to thank you because I know that you did reach out to a lot of businesses and get a lot of positive feedback. I too have heard a lot of positive, a lot of negative, anyone who's reached out to me and asked to meet with me about it, whether it was of concern or of positive feedback, I've taken the time to meet with. I also live downtown, work downtown, walk downtown, dine downtown, patronize all the businesses downtown, so I see it and experience it firsthand, I see the negatives, I see the positives. I see the vision, and I see the idea of a compromise, but I don't want to push around a P either, because we've done that with parking, we've done that with permits. If it's not going to be successful because we don't, not everybody has the vision and we don't have the buy-in, then, you know, we, it's not going to be successful. If it's going to be successful, that's great, I do think that there are valid things to address, I think that we are working towards addressing those. And I, I know it's hard to hear, like, hey, someone's perspective is different, so I've been very open-minded about this. But I, I want to be cautious that we don't just push around a P with this. I want to make a good decision, a decision that's good for the community, that's good for Phoenixville, that's viable, that can be trialed and, and looked at and really assessed and, and move forward. Otherwise, I think we just don't do it at all.
The, the one part I'd like to add, this is just sort of the perspective I'm bringing to it from, from all the conversations we have had over the last, going, starting next month, three years on this. We, we know, you know, we don't have a data set for twenty nineteen, we didn't do this prior to the pandemic, we know that it worked in twenty twenty. We know what things we would have changed in twenty twenty-one, and what we're looking at is the potential of adding in the things that we really love about twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen into what worked in twenty twenty, and seeing if it is as successful as we think it might be. Certainly, we can dial back, we can go any direction we, we choose tonight, I would urge that we make a decision tonight, because if we are going to go forward with it, we certainly need to get ahead of the marketing, scheduling, and advertising of this type of, of, of event. But I do think I, I personally would love to see the, the, you know, the actual deployment of the closure with all of the events that, it sounds like we're all in agreement, we've liked it when it's been closed and we had the events, we haven't seen that in this, in this system yet, so that's, that's what I've been mulling over, that, you know, it would be nice to actually see what happens when we bring back all the events, we bring back the road closure, and we, we find out. Mr. Weiss.
Yep, so just to weigh in with my two cents, I think this is a vision, this is a bold vision. This is a vision that is not one hundred percent agreed upon by the community, but I don't think any bold visions ever are or ever will be. I do sincerely like the idea of having conversations around the best way to accomplish something. But personally, I'm behind this vision, from our survey results, it seems like our community, who we are elected by and for is overwhelmingly in favor of this. But with that said, if we pass this tonight, there's nothing to say that we might, we could, we are precluded from reconsidering this at any stage if we find that things are going sideways or things are not turning out as expected. And at a minimum, we would revisit this on a yearly basis and improve and make adjustments and change. I did hear one of our commenters in the public participation session mention, there were three words, but one was assess, test, assess, and, if I remember. Test, rest, and assess, and thank you. Then I think we kind of have done that to a degree, we tested this, we implemented it, we have rested, we have had a significant amount of time, a significant amount of discourse around this to assess, and now I think it's time to, to make a decision about what we want the future to look like. Again, knowing that not everybody loves the idea. I, I think it's a bold vision, and I'd like to see it through and, and see what, what potential it has.
So in terms of my making, decision-making, we had two significant inputs. I appreciate the PBA conducting its survey. It was significant data. I have a little bit of my own interpretation of it, but they definitely demonstrated that there were sets of businesses on Main Street, on Gay Street, on three hundred block, as well as the one hundred and two hundred block, that felt like their business was going down because we were closing the street for a month, every weekend throughout the spring and summer and into the fall. However, we also conducted what I thought was a very fair, fairly written and conducted public survey. And overwhelming is a little, a little, a little overstated. It was sixty-some, but clearly, did a little bit more of a dig into it. Sixty-some percent of the people who are either residents of the borough or residents and business owners in the borough support the, the full weekend closure for the, for the, for the full, for the full timeframe. So that is a significant number, but there is also a significant number from the surveys. So we need to modulate this, and we need to, we need to address the genuine distress that these businesses, important businesses who are experiencing, particularly on Main Street and Gay Street, but I don't know that, I reject the notion that going to First Fridays plus just the two hundred block being closed during public, during temporary community events is the answer. I think the consistent use of the downtown closure, I recommend, I don't, I'm not prepared to propose, but I'd like us as a council members to discuss now an adjusted timeframe. But I believe, and I'm convinced, that the notion that we do it every week, not this week and then that week, not this block and then maybe not, is, is, I think we need to change how we use these two blocks on the weekends, on the good weather weekends with a more adjusted schedule, and I, and I disagree with you, Dana. I appreciate that it's an extremely busy street, but we can make it, adjust it to be something during a period of time, I'm not, I'm not prepared to put my stake in the ground or even, even render discussion about a permanent solution, a permanent approach to the street and a plaza. But I am very interested in making this work and understanding, I think, the, the point about, you know, test, rest, and address, we haven't really done it under normal conditions. And we should do that this summer, this spring and summer, and potentially into fall. So I, I think we modify it, and I think we need to also, as a council tonight, make some caveats that are part of the decision, I don't know whether it needs to be as part of the, but about weather-based closures. And as the mayor has discussed, accessibility issues around drop-off points or something like that, and either direct staff to lay out a specific plan that we can, you know, further understand. And then, yes, as has been said, if we think, or we're finding, we, but we haven't established the criteria, we would need to establish a criteria. If we think in the second half of the summer, it's not working, we need to define now what not working is. And is that another survey? Is that, is that an ongoing, you know, month-by-month contact with businesses? Then treat the businesses as this, as the, all of the businesses in the downtown area as the deciders, as the people who can help us make the decision, we should make, we should put that as part of our decision tonight. So I support the closure, I support the closure every weekend. I think we modify it in terms of the timeframe, in terms of when it starts and when it ends. I think it's clear that from what the mayor said, that attempting to try and do it, you know, Saturday morning and then stopping it Sunday morning or starting it Saturday morning and stopping it Sunday night is to, is cost prohibitive, we shouldn't do it then. So that, that, that I trust, that, that assessment. So that's my judgment, I'd like to hear a little bit more discussion, and then perhaps I'll offer an amendment.
Mr. Kirk.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. You know, the, these are all good points, what, what I'm struggling with is that it seems the borough is taking the lead here. This is really one of the most divisive issues I've seen come before this body in a long, long time. The business owners don't agree with each other, I'd say they're split, there, there's, you can't say there's unanimity among the business owners behind this. The residents are divided, the people who live on Prospect, on Church, on Washington Avenue, you know, they are struggling with real legitimate traffic concerns, this is a very divisive issue. As far as the business community is concerned, you know, if they want this, they should get together amongst themselves, put together a plan, come to us, carry the ball with it, maybe they need to hire a Main Street manager, maybe they need, maybe we need to set up a special tax assessment district so they can, they can raise revenue to have a manager and provide some funding to handle these logistics. But as, as I see it, we're, we're trying to be the activist municipality here, and there's not enough unanimity behind it to make it succeed if, if this, if the street closing should go through. I'd also like to talk about the traffic concerns. The two hundred and one hundred block of Bridge Streets are a connector between two state highways, Route one thirteen and Route twenty-nine. It's the closest those two state highways come together until. Um, it's the closest those two state highways come together until you get to Rhodes. Over in Perkyomen Township where they actually cross. So because of that, there's a lot of stress on this road. We don't have the infrastructure. We had four years previous administration of infrastructure weeks. Never, never solved our infrastructure problem with um. With just, you know, the, the traffic going. Eastbound on Church Street crosses the traffic going westbound on Washington Avenue. And it just. But we don't have the road layout for it. I, I worry about the stress we're putting on these residential areas. Because. Residential areas like Church Street, like Prospect Street, like Washington Avenue. You need a critical mass of homeowner occupied units. That's been the longstanding policy of this borough. That um to discourage. Homeowner occupation to, I'm sorry, to encourage homeowner occupation. And I'm afraid if you deteriorate the quality. Of life in these neighborhoods, you could push them, push that critical mass. The other way. Um, I think it it's very important. That we. That we keep that in mind, that we need neighborhoods. That have a critical mass of owner occupied units. We don't want them to have. To to tip toward rental occupied units. Um, it seems like. And and I know people talk about a vision. I'm sorry, I'm not getting what the vision is. Uh, I'm just not getting it. Not, not that I'm the smartest person in the room. I just. I just don't know what the vision is. It seems like there are a lot of issues to work through here. In terms of providing access for people with limited mobility. It, it seems like there are a lot of things up in the air that we haven't quite figured out yet. And um, your honor, I, I know you mentioned the lot behind Customers Bank. But I don't think that's accessible. When Bridge Streets closed, you could get to it. How do you get out of it?
Uh, from, from uh Ashland Street at Customers Bank. There's an.
But Ashland is one way in.
Market, is a market that goes out. So market goes out, Ashland goes in.
Okay.
It's full every weekend, so they're getting in and out.
Okay.
It's probably full tonight.
I stand corrected.
The parking lot paid for itself in two months.
Okay. Okay, I, I stand corrected, but uh. And and as far, I, I agree with Mr. Carmenito that I, I think it's something that. We need to dial back and maybe use that as a laboratory. To see how it would work. Um. I, I don't buy this idea that it has to be. Every week or people just aren't going to get it. I mean, people. Uh, the public's smart enough to figure out if they, if they. Come to town and the street's not closed, they're still going to come to town. If they come to town and the streets closed, they're still going to come to town. They're still going to stay here. So I don't. I, I don't think that makes a difference, but as far as marketing goes. Who does that? I mean, that's, that's not a job for the borough. That's not a job for municipal government. That should be the business community doing that. And it seems like the business community is divided. And if they would come together on a plan. I, I, I think we would have. Better ground to stand on. In pushing this forward. However, there's still the issue. With the traffic. Within the neighborhoods in uh Washington Avenue, Prospect Street. Church Street. Uh, you know, I, I think of. Of the Fran Leibowitz special that was on Netflix, Pretend It's a City. She tells people. Tourists who come to New York who are looking around. You know, walking into traffic, pretend it's a city, pretend people live here, people have to move here, people walk here, people work here. People dine here, people shop here. We have to get through town. We have to move through town. Pretend it's a city. We got, we gotta move. We, we have to be able to move around this town and when. Bridge Street is closed, it makes it a lot more difficult to pretend to, to move around the town. I, I don't, the, the logistical issues I think are. Too difficult to overcome, which is why I think it's a good idea. To dial this back. And Mr. Moore, you talked to some caveats. I would like to hear what they are. To push this discussion forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Rich. I think Mr. Weiss was up next, I think.
Sure, if that's okay.
Then we'll go to Mr. Moore.
Um, and I did, I did want to, uh, Rich, I, I respect all of your opinions and everything you said. I, I did want to ask about. Like, what I understand was a different bold decision made previously that also didn't have. Quite unanimous support, and that's First Fridays. This was before my time and I, I wasn't here and I, I certainly don't have the context, but as I understand, that was a pretty divisive. Topic as well with a similar kind of split. As I guess was Food Truck Festival, but um. That's a, 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 a direction that the borough went in that I think by all measures and by all accounts is. A, a, a wild success. Um, but I also understand that some of the same groups and individuals that opposed First Fridays are now opposing this. Uh, I wonder if you could speak to the experience of the process of having those conversations and maybe any parallels or, or, or. Not parallel aspects of of those conversations.
Yeah, I can't really because I don't think I was on council back in uh. That, that window. When the first Friday, the original First Friday started.
Do, do we have anybody here that was?
I was, was not on council, um, but I, I remember as a member of the community, just how divisive it got and how it. Toxic it got in the community and and on social media and. Being in the business community and being new to the business community, people didn't want it. They didn't like it.
With all due respect, I will also just remind everyone that Paba has currently, how many active members? I just, Mr. Kirchner, and I, I'm, I'm just, I'm a little tired of this. I, we need to be honest about how many people Paba represents. How many active members? If someone could please answer. How many active paying members does Paba currently have? You cannot represent yourself as representing every single business in this community if you. Uh, how many, but how many members do you currently have as an organization?
We're going to keep this civil and this is actually currently. This is a discussion amongst council. Um, we'll bring that back to. Mr. Weiss, I think, at the floor or Mr. Kirchner.
It was actually me.
Sorry.
But you can shut me up if you want to. Um, no, I, and again, I don't mean this in a, a not civil way, but I do remember that. I remember like. Other members of the business community that were for it saying, if you are in for, for this, we need to advocate for it. And I remember listening to the people that weren't for it and I understood both sides. Um, so again, I stand and listen to both sides, but I, I remember that and I remember that it was a tough. Growing pain and there were a lot of businesses that didn't feel it was beneficial until they started to see it become beneficial. So. I do see a parallel there. Um, I'm not saying that that's the answer, but I, I do see it and I do see that bold forward vision. Isn't always unanimous and I don't want to hurt anybody. I don't want anybody to be inconvenienced, but we do need to not push around a P and we do need to make a decision. Make a fair one and maybe that's where some of the idea of Mr. Moore, I'll certainly be quiet in a minute and let you take over. That's where we say, hey, this is our trial when we do it not in COVID and we market it and we have events and. We look at, we're going to have new bollards. I think that's coming up on the agenda in ITT this month, like. Those improvements to this and we give it a test period and we see what it's like doing it the real way, but. I would hope that the whole community would get around it and have fun with it and do it and not just be upset about it, but look, look to try to. Work together and make it great for what it is so that we can make a good compromise.
Let's, let's answer a key question here. Because we are already a destination. And. If. Uh, uh, I mean, it comes down to the five whys. Why does, I mean, Rich is asking the essential question. Why do we need to do this? I would like to, I would like to hear. Those who support it to explain exactly why. Those two blocks should be closed every weekend. There, I, I absolutely agree that they're very successful. I absolutely agree that we have thousands of people. Who said they would, they wanted to continue for the entire time that it was proposed. So popularity, success. But, but we were also popular and successful prior to doing it and we only, we, we closed Main Street and the Main Street parking lot. Uh, for First Fridays once a month uh during the timeframe. So let's be really clear. Why we believe it is better for the borough. And better for the future of the borough. To do this every weekend for, in it, in whatever timeframe we end up doing. I'd like to hear that answer.
Yeah, um, I can address some of that. Um, in just general research across the country, and this kind of speaks to uh an item that Mr. Kirchner raised as well. Uh, you can find many, many examples of municipalities shutting down main thoroughfares. For uh increased walkability for commerce, et cetera, kind of across the nation. Philadelphia shuts down West River Drive every Sunday year round. I, I, I believe Ms. Ginty raised an example in Vermont. Uh, there are examples of this in. But almost every major city that you can find, but just as many small towns that probably might, the names of which might not resonate in this room, but. Um, certainly parallel what we have here. Um. Oh, well, I think they've seen great results and you, you don't need to do much Googling to find lots of examples of similar ideas playing out positively.
But we already have those great results. So what, what more will we gain? By implementing this as a standing process?
I mean, well, please, sixty-six percent of our constituents, right? I know that's not a. Which is a statistically representative sample and reaches statistical significance.
Keep the, the conversation is between councils. Please keep the conversation between council at the moment.
Okay, so, so of our community, I think, uh, a majority and. More of a majority than you really see for any activity are asking for this. So that's uh.
So the, the. The perspective I would bring to, to your question, Mr. Moore, is that the desire that we don't plateau.
Okay.
So we have been on a forward trajectory of revitalization since we hired our first. Mark, you know, Main Street manager who, who did bring us into the marketing realm. We did start, we, we entered the marketing foray because there wasn't anybody else doing it and. And we brought that on and uh through various. Uh, formats, we've continued that through the Phoenixville first uh collaboration between the chamber and the borough. Uh, we've continued to actually be the ones that market the downtown, um, because there isn't. Um, an organization large enough to, to try to handle that. It's a big task. But I think that the desire from a, a lot of us who have been working on this for a while is to, to see. Forward progress continue and, and that's what. One of the things that when we started talking about this in November about redoing this again for this year. The desire was to try to continue the progress and keep us. Being the attractive place to go. I can tell you attending, uh, having attended Westchester's meetings recently. One of the things they said was Phoenixville can do this, why can't we? Because they couldn't figure out how to do a three-day weekend. They could only figure out how to do seven days a week. So there's, there's lots of communities around us looking to us and calling us, asking how we do it. And we're in the, you know, what we want to do is be that, that headline story about having the downtown that is attractive to walk through. That has plenty of room and um. You know, that's, that's the first why in my mind.
If you're not moving forward, you're falling behind. Is, is an ancient idea and it's not untrue. It's, it has true value and. So those who are, I, I think there's a good point to that, that if we. Uh, we, we could, we could fall behind and we have demonstrated. That it is a successful way. An appealing way. We have plenty of residents who were within walking distance who love it. And so that's an important, that's an important thing. That we have plenty of people who. Will park at, you know, Maury Road on this trail. And walk into town. And walk back out again when it's dark. And if we ever get the rest of that lit, I mean, it'll, it'll really be something. I mean. The, the walkability that we've, we've been putting into place in the town. This is an aspect of that as well. I, I. But you're right, it's a really busy road. It connects two highways, so.
I would also further piggyback on what Mr. Ewald said, not only not plateauing, but. Let's be honest, yes, we're getting on the other side of COVID, but and what was successful before COVID was successful before COVID. But we are never going back to life before COVID. Life has changed forever since COVID nineteen and. While we will get back to normal, while we will, you know, not sit here and not wear masks and be able to welcome the public for their comment back into the room and I'm so happy for that. Like this meeting is great because there's so many people here and I'm glad to have that now. Business has changed, technology has changed, the way we approach life has changed. So. Going off of what Mr. Ewa was saying with not plateauing, we also need to change because life has changed and all those technologies have changed. The way we operate our businesses, the way we, people dine downtown even, like the way you order your food, all of that has changed. People ordering more online. So that is another aspect of this that I think can be beneficial. Again. I understand we need to, to have a balance, but I, I would like to give it a good, honest try, a fair try. And I do want to put good parameters because I think. John and Peter can say, I was probably the one on the phone when it was raining. Why are we doing this? I'm going to hear about it and I really want to advocate for these people because I understand. So I do think we need to put parameters on it because I see that. Um. But uh, we do have to figure out a way to make it work or just say, hey. It, it, we don't have the buy-in.
I, for me, it's, it's a community gathering place. You're bringing people together in our community, but you're also providing for an experience for people outside our community to come down. You have the opportunity for young families to come down, for parents to feel safe that their kids are there and they're not going to run into active traffic. You have the ability for young teenagers who don't have a place to go. They don't go to the mall anymore. So you had mentioned the Val Rio, like somewhere where young people can go. A friend of mine's daughter loves Diving Cat so much that she basically takes her allowance. And spends it there every week and, and, you know, and I would think of Diving Cat as a much more adult shop, like, but here's this middle schooler going every week. To that store to buy things like this brings the people downtown into a community gathering space. And I think that we take that special, what makes Phoenix still special with that gathering place and we now open it. To the world so that we can bring more people into that space. And I, I mean, I keep reiterating this, I, like, I wish every day was First Friday. Like that we could do that level of business and bring in that kind of traffic and that kind of excitement and energy into the community.
Uh, just another point I heard. So one thing I'm struggling to understand why we need to do it every month for six months. And would it not be equally as successful if we did it every month for four months? And I, uh. I forget what my, I forget where my other point was, but uh, that's, I, I don't, I don't understand why it has to be all or nothing. So it's either we do it every, every weekend for six months or. We shouldn't do it at all. I. Like, would it still be successful? I mean, is it not going to create the same vibe? Oh, and the other thing, that's what I remember my other point was. I've heard, you know, consistently through feedback that, and I kind of feel this way myself, um. Having it for so long kind of diminishes the uniqueness of it. So it just kind of becomes. Something that happens every weekend and up, the streets are closed again. So. I mean, that's just, you know, my perspective and some things I've heard.
Just to give some feedback as to why we looked at it from, from the timeframe that is listed on the agenda and has been considered. Uh, looking at TCEs historically and currently, uh, in terms of what's already been approved and what we, what we anticipate to still come in. The May, September, October months are booked solid. So the, the idea was, uh, we've, uh, most weekends are going to have some form of closure. So we'd look to, to stretch that out. Uh, we did find in twenty twenty-one that going past October didn't, you know, uh, didn't get more use. Uh, so we look to, to bring it down from that standpoint. But I'll, I'll leave the rest for other discussion.
Yeah, I think the timing also lines up pretty well with First Fridays, which again have been kind of a resounding success. So going off of that data point as a time to start and stop, I think has also been a, a consideration.
I'll offer that I have modifications that I wanted to propose and then I realized I made the motion, so I can't amend it. Correct?
You can amend your motion.
Oh, I can? I don't have the big, I was ruled.
Uh, all right, I'm, I'm prepared to make amendments. Um, for the, for the, so I'd like to make a, uh, like to amend my motion. To have the, uh. One hundred and two hundred block street closure run from the Memorial Day weekend through the end of September. With the same hours. Um, I would like as part of that decision that the staff. Uh, define for council, the added drop-off locations that can be facilitated. Either on star, uh, on the cross streets for one hundred and two hundred. Um, I would like to have a specific. Rule around cancellation due to weather, either rainstorms. Or potentially excessive heat during those months. Uh, and I would like to have a plan in place, uh, or discussion with, uh, Peter and the police department. To manage, um, the traffic intersection. At least one night, either Friday nights or Friday night and Saturday night for a period of time. At, um, church and star, um, uh, through actual. Police, actual active management of the, of that, that cross traffic. So that is the, those are the amendments and then, I'm sorry, finally. That staff. Establish criteria and a process for assessing the success. Or not of the downtown closure. Um, at a, at a halfway point to be determined. Uh, the criteria in terms of is it, is it successful? Or are we still experiencing the same level of problems? And the same, in contributing to the same division that, uh, Councilman Kirkman. Uh, called for. So those are my, those are my.
Do you need, do you need amendments?
So we will need a second and a vote on just amending the motion. It does not mean you are accepting the motion. It just means that you are agreeing to amend the original motion.
I'll second that.
And that the amended motion does not have to be as seconded by the original seconder.
Correct.
So we have a motion by Mr. Moore to amend his motion. We have a second by Mr. Carmenito to amend the original motion. We need, uh, vote to discuss it.
We can certainly discuss whether you want to.
Amend it, but it's not discussing the actual amendment.
You confuse me.
Yeah, correct. And, and in the meantime, well, do that first.
So we have a motion to amend by Mr. Moore. We have a motion, uh, to accept it to second to the amended motion by Mr. Carmenito. All those in favor of amending the motion? Opposed? Just one, okay, so motion to amend carries six, one. We now we can discuss the amended motion.
Correct. The only motion on the floor right now is the amended motion. If someone would like to. Make a competing motion. They can do so if they would like to make a motion for what was originally presented.
Right, but now the current motion on the floor is the amended motion by Mr. Moore with the amendments and the, the. Dates changed and all of those, like those, um, requirements. So that's the vote we have on the floor to discuss. I'm open to this. I think perhaps I was misheard or I did not articulate myself well when I'm saying I, we need to. Do this and do it right or not do it. I mean, I don't want to push around a P. Is my preferred to do it from. Um, Memorial Day to Labor Day? No, because I know as an event planner and as a business owner, there's prime times that we're missing out on to try the, to really make this successful. But it will still add to slower seasons and it could enhance slower seasons. So I think that that's a good compromise if that's what the community wants. But I do want us to understand that your best time to really create something great is going to be May, September and October. They are the busiest seasonal based things. Um, I think that this, having a compromise is great. What I was going to propose, but I'll go with this for the sake of compromise and everybody. Moving through this and us moving through, through something to market is looking at it for a period of time. Again, assessing, analyzing and moving forward. I think we have been doing that in a sense and we've been assessing each week and making adjustments. So hopefully you can move forward with this. I would really hope that the business community will get around this and certainly that we can all work together with. The chamber to market this. I would love to create more events. I've already reached out to a couple of places with some ideas, so.
Just to clarify that the amended motion is for, uh, Memorial Day weekend through the end of September?
That is correct.
Okay, would that include the first Friday of October? Is that just? I don't have a calendar in front of me, sorry. Including October first weekend or?
I also stipulate.
Okay. Correct, so.
Okay, we get the first weekend of October.
We'll wrap that into there.
With the same hours. The staff to provide us, the, the, to define added drop-off points to assist with, uh, accessibility. A criteria for making. Cancellation plans for weather, due to weather. And which obviously would have to be carried out, uh, on Thursday. Which was always something. Traffic management at Star and Church on. Whatever, at least Friday evening, but Friday and Saturday evenings. Uh, and then establishing. A point at which we will reassess the entire downtown closure and with, with established criteria.
So, so the question I have is what, what does this compromise do? Like, is anybody winning in this compromise or is everybody just losing a little? Is, is one of the questions because, uh, the, the plan as outlined and as voted out of committee. Had a, had a vision, had thought behind it, had reasons to establish these things. It seems like we're just arbitrarily trimming this to. I don't know.
It's not an arbitrary trimming.
To give some ground.
It's, it's, it's to reduce, um, it's, it's two things. Showing consideration to a significant community of people who state that they is, that the closures are negatively impacting their business. So it's giving them two months in which we per, we're closing those two streets. Now they have two months to show us that the, that, that, to help us with contrast, you know, is the business. You know, so we, we, we do have that test element. So that's for the two months. We have, that's part of the process of assessing, assessing the true value of closing these two blocks. Um, it's also politics. Because we have, and that's part of what we do here. It's, it's, uh, uh, recognizing that there are, uh, concerning voices. This, this character was very, was, was very illuminating about the notion that there's disagreement. So one way we, we can resolve disagreement is by not having it at all. Or another way we can resolve disagreement is by having a more constricted solution and we test and study that. And, you know, with the other elements that I'm proposing that we specify it, not that it's just operating. As, as we've already experienced it, that there will be weather-based decisions as to whether or not to do it, to cancel it. There will be, uh, additional efforts to find, find drop-off points, which has been an accessibility concern. It's not going to solve it. We're not going to be able to have people get dropped off in front of driving cat. That's, that's, that's a fact. Uh, but we find ways to have the traffic management, particularly at a, I know is a problem, problematic intersection there. Let's start, start in church. So that's.
No, I think the other piece, it's the dates that I, I, I am not sure if it's just watering it down for the sake of watering it down. But whether it really accomplishes anybody's goals. I do, the, what I worry about is if we have a vision. And we, we cut and snip and adjust it so much that it doesn't end up really fulfilling the vision. That we end up with something that meets no goals, doesn't work, everybody hates it, even the people who proposed it. And then we never tried in earnest.
I think we are trying. My proposal, I believe, tries it in earnest. I thought about this aspect for the, for the past month, so.
Mr. Kirk.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I, I want to ask about. Remediating or ameliorating the traffic impacts that this is going to have on. Um, those three streets I mentioned, Prospect Church and Washington. And I, I don't know if it's an amendment to your amendment or if it's just. You know, as far as signage goes further out from the downtown to direct traffic. Um, away from the downtown and, um.
Can I jump on that question real quick?
Yes.
So we don't lose track. This is something I've discussed with our, our police department. Uh, one of the luxuries from COVID was there's all this money on directional signage that the DMS boards at the county now has. And so one of the things that we can do, if we were to move forward with this proposal is between now and Memorial Day. Make the request to county, both Montgomery and Chester County, they store a lot of these DMS board, which is the, the digital messaging signs or the towable signs. Uh, we've also had a great relationship with Penn Dot for their two permanent DMS boards that they have at, um, at Pickering Run and at, uh. At Redners. So they've been broadcasting that message, but, uh, in working with both our county partners, we can just, you know, hopefully. Deploy these DMS boards to further, uh, you know, announce the traffic issues. So that's one, one aspect. I don't think it solves everything, but I just want to let you know that, that's one avenue that, that we've been researching, uh, leading up to this.
So, so that's not something we need to build into this motion?
I, I don't think so. I mean, so there, uh, as with a lot of things and, and with the project that we approved tonight, there's a lot of moving parts that occur after the motion is approved. Before anything's implemented. So there, there's, uh, Peter alluded to it. Uh, we've had, uh, meetings with our new fire chief. He's come up with the whole SOP, SOG for, for how everything's handled for the downtown and that's one of the luxuries of now having a, a new fire chief is that. You know, a lot of this pre-planning is now getting into effect and, and trying to alleviate or pre-plan for all these things.
Okay, with, with that, I would, I would make a motion to call for the vote.
Scott, would you like to remind us how a, a calling the vote works?
The amended motion has already been approved, uh, so a call on the vote. There's a call on the vote.
Yep, with that, all those in favor of the amended vote as proposed, as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six, one. With that, Mr. Moore, anything else from Parks and Rec?
Beg your pardon, all the other issues were dealt with, with the unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. And as, just to follow up, you know, we will continue to meet internally and, and work this out. With that, we'll move to Mr. Kirchner with policy. Understood.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would, uh. Make a motion that we schedule and advertise a public hearing to. Consider an ordinance amendment to chapter twenty-seven zoning.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kirchner, second by Ms. Berkeley, uh, for a policy motion or for a policy amendment to chapter twenty-seven zoning. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries six zero, just for the purpose of the minutes, uh, Ms. Dugan, uh, had to leave, so, uh, ten twenty-six. Okay, uh, anything else out of policy, Mr. Kirchner? With that, Mr. Weiss with ITT.
Uh, yes, I'd like to make a motion to authorize staff to prepare a request for proposal for design and installation of temporary Ballard locations in downtown. As recommended in committee three, zero.
Second.
Sorry, I didn't have my microphone on. Do I need to say that for the?
Motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Ms. Berkeley for, uh, to, to further, uh. For the insulator, for further design and installation of temporary ballards, uh, I miss crack.
Just, uh, for clarity, well. Ideally, this is going to prove, but we are also going to look internally to see if we can do it ourselves. If we can't, we'll, we'll continue moving forward to the RFP process, but we're going to try to do it ourselves.
Yeah, sounds great. Love the, uh, staff willingness to explore.
We should have a good update on that next week, I, I think, so. Discussion on that next week.
As I understood, I, I thought there was significant infrastructure challenges underneath.
We, we've, we've looked at the, uh, the utilities and, uh, where we were looking at a, a bench. With the ballards and it drops, the bench drops into place. Uh, we're not going to be able to do that because of the utilities. And so we will somewhat of a, a, a pyramid. Where the core is there so that the, the follower could go into there. And the, the pyramid, uh, when it's poured in place will prevent heaving during the changes in weather conditions and what have you. We think we can do that, but, uh, we're taking a look at it.
When, and we discussed in ITT about, um, being able to do it with precast and, and the utilities were getting in the way of being able to do a precast. By doing it the way we did it at Main Church, which was a trench dig, um. Or, or how we're currently looking at it is still.
Understood. I thought, I thought, you know, a century and a half of utilities meant we couldn't do it.
They're there, wood pipes and all. All right, uh, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six, zero. Anything else out of ITT, Mr. Weiss?
Uh, nope, just a note that our next meeting is, uh, one week from tonight, three fifteen, uh, here in council chambers at seven PM.
Uh, there was nothing that got referred out of the consent agenda from finance, uh, so there's, there's no report out of that. So with that, uh, we'll go into our, uh, item fourteen for. And I'm going to, uh, defer to our solicitor and manager for the process on this since, uh, again, I don't know the last time we, I, well, it was about six years ago. We had to fill a seat. So you can walk us through the process here.
Sure. As council knows at the special meeting that started at six PM, uh, this evening. Uh, we officially accepted the resignation of council member Edwin Soto. Thereby leaving a vacancy on the council. We have thirty days to fill that vacancy, uh, starting at. Six PM or six oh three, when that vacancy was accepted. Uh, or excuse me, that resignation was accepted and the vacancy was created. Uh, I. Was present, we interviewed several candidates, uh, for that vacancy, uh, and, uh. Deliberation on that vacancy, uh. Can occur, uh, what we would do is, uh, I would accept the motion to open nominations. We would then accept nominations, uh, in order. Uh, there does not need to be a second for a nomination, uh, nor a vote to accept anyone as a nomination. At that point, we would then close nominations and then we would consider each person nominated. In the order that they were nominated in the nomination period. Uh, and we would vote thereon. Uh, the first nomination to get a vote by a quorum. Uh, would be the person who would be selected to fill the seat. Because this meeting started with seven, our quorum remains four. Correct.
Do we need to start with the motion to? I'll make a motion to accept nominations to fill the vacancy for North Ward.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second and we vote on the, the opening. Okay, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
So we now have a nomination period open. It was council's pleasure for the, uh, nominations to fill the, uh, remaining term of the vacancy created in North Ward council seat.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a nomination for Ms. Jessie Webb to fill the vacancy in the North Ward council seat.
As Scott mentioned, we do not need seconds for nominations. Are there any other nominations?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, I'd like to nominate, uh, Garrett Rale, uh, to fill the seat in the North Board.
Okay, we have, uh, two nominations at this point. Any other nominations? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the nomination period?
Still moved.
Second.
With that, we go in order of the nominations.
It does need to be a vote.
Sorry. Thank you. Uh, vote, uh, calling the vote to close nomination period, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries six, zero to close the nomination period. And now it's processed in order of nominations for consideration. Okay, so the first nomination was for the, uh, remaining, uh, two years of the North Ward, uh, council seat. Their first nomination was for Jessie Webb. All those in favor of appointing Jessie Webb?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries six, zero. Okay, motion carries six zero. That will be the congratulations, not a lot of fanfare, but.
And I would just like to thank all the applicants. We had a lot of great applicants and a lot of great interest, so it was not an easy decision.
Ms. Webb, if you can stick around, we'll do a swearing in shortly.
We will also have to. Accept the resolution. Appointing Ms. Webb.
Let's start with that.
So I'll make a motion to accept a resolution, appointing Jessie Webb to the North County, North Ward council seat.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss to appoint Jessie Webb to the remaining term of the North Ward council seat. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, motion carries six zero.
Okay, so the next thing we need to do is we need to have the affidavit of residence that says you've been a resident. So so Ms. Webb, if you can spend a minute with Ms. Logan? And I apologize, we we don't do this very often, so I'm not fully researched, you know.
So we'll we'll circle back to that in a moment. There's.
Other participation.
So with that, we'll open up the second and final round of public participation. Members of the. Public that are joining us here in Council Chambers may step to the podium. Please fill out the ledger with your name and address and then let us know who you are. We are trying to keep comments under three minutes so that everybody has a chance to speak and we've been here. For a little while now, so. Welcome.
You all know who I am already. Do I have to do it again?
Formally, yes, so that Jen can do the minutes.
My name is Sue Meadows and I live in the borough, Phoenixville. And I just have three very brief comments. First of all, you all deserve that raise, so. You've worked hard and you've earned it. Second, I'd like to thank you all for listening to both sides. And listening and and reaching the compromise that hopefully will be beneficial. And we can hash this out further as we go. And third is moving forward. Perhaps we can form a committee or or have workshops or something that would be created with all the various stakeholders involved. So that we don't get to this point and and have to hash this out into the wee hours of of council's time. Maybe have some some workshops or something. And move from there.
Absolutely.
Thank you again.
Just as an update to those that are joining us online, we will move to the online public participation after we process through those who are here in person.
Joan Bregy, again, resident of Phoenixville, just wanted to say thank you for listening to us. And to just add to what Sue was saying, but hadn't many, I just wanted to. Turn it back to first Friday when we started. One of the things we, one of the things we did was. At that time, the Business Association worked with Barry to, you know, form it and everything in the Art Center. Was have a theme. Every first Friday. And we always tried to bring something in for the kids. And I think that if we had some kind of committee. Where we could have maybe even a talent show. Or somebody who does storybook telling for the kids. Or you didn't get people because we had, you know, at that time, we don't, we didn't have cell phones and stuff like that. We could get people who are interested in doing mine or something else, you know, but let's keep it with the families. And like I was saying, we want to work with you. We are willing to work with you, okay? We don't want this to be. We want it to be a success. And I just want you to understand that. We were never against it. We just believed. Just like when we started. The fiber, just to give a good example from Henrik being here, we started on Main Street, moved it down. Then moved it ever to the field and now it's to another field. You know, you you read it just as you grow. And that's what we're asking because this time when we started first Friday. We were only closed in Main Street. You're asking a lot of people to jeopardize their livelihood. So if we're going to do it, let's do it right and let's do it together and keep the families in it, okay? Thank you all.
Thank you, Jim. Any other members of public that are here with us tonight?
Hello again, so my name is Emmeline Fox and I'm a resident of the borough. And I actually just wanted to make a quick comment on the. The subdivision of or the, you know, the development of Steelworks and it sounds overall like a very exciting project and I like that it's redevelopment. And I guess this is a comment on that project as well as all development that happens here. I feel like we should be talking more about sustainable infrastructure. And a big thing is making sure that it is based on electric so that it can one day be solar that's running these buildings and not gas. It's really important. And also consider sustainable water infrastructure. And. You know, big picture, the impact of building buildings obviously is a huge environmental taxes the environment, so how can we offset that as a community? Things to think about, but overall, I think it is exciting, but I hope to hear more and more of that. In the talks and we talk about development, because I know development is going to happen, but how can we do it sustainably? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Connolly, just one comment about the traffic. I hope somebody's thinking about making Church Street two ways. It seems to be such an obvious solution that there must be something wrong with it because it seems so simple with regard to the traffic. I just wanted to add one other item that I missed remarkably in my. Advocacy for kindergarten. As most of you know, I've been a trail guy since nineteen eighty nine. And I'm sure you've seen our proposal, which looks to extend the trail. From the train station, the old train station up to. The kindergarten center. I think that it's a viable idea. It would connect that whole side of town down to the trail system. So. And and the whole idea of where the rail is going to be, I know what prevailing thinking was. I was part of the Schuylkill Valley Metro Project in nineteen ninety seven. I think there's. Better than even chance that it could be out on Second Street, so I just wanted to encourage. The council to, I I take it you're going to go into an executive session to give our team. Their play. We're the cheerleaders. You're the team. We're cheering you on. We want to win this. We think you're going to win one for the town and I don't think there's going to be any casualties. Except a little bit of money to find somewhere else. And the hard work that Jean's done continuously. Congratulations for Phoenix Neo. We know. That we can do this learning center. We just need to get this property and we're just hoping. That you have the resolve and the patience, maybe. I didn't require a little bit of humility with the school district to say, let's. Make this work. So thank you for your efforts and again, great idea, learning center. Thank you again.
No one else in the public, we can move over to our digital or members of Zoom.
Barbara, I've turned on your microphone.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to. Thank. Thank all of you on council to approve our partnership. To finally have a home for the historic Phoenix wheel. It's been my pleasure to help write the narrative for the for the grant application. And I I really want to thank Owen Hind just. The improvements that are needed to make that property usable in the way that is anticipated. He was so helpful that as part of the narrative that I wrote, I I spoke with him to make sure that I. Included in the narrative, the improvements to the property as well as all the facts. About the historic Phoenix wheel, so I look forward. To working with the borough. Our board approved this partnership at our meeting. Last Tuesday and. We we see this as a very positive way forward in terms of the establishment of. The French Creek Trail. And this, this is the oldest wheel in the world as we were told. By the Pennsylvania Historic and Museum Commission back in two thousand nine because of the recession, they could not. Let us participate in any wage in the Save Our Treasures Grant round and. The fact that it was not able to be installed was where it was originally planned. Ironically, it's less windy, I believe, where it will hopefully be installed, so. We'll start on a major campaign to restore. The wheel and it'll be our responsibility to install it. And I'm already working with people in Asbury Park. To gain historic images that can be applied to the platform. On which the wheel will be installed above this, so it's very late. But I miss my opportunity to. Thank everyone on council for approving this unanimously and look forward to working with all of you and Jean and. Kelly and the team to find a way to make it happen. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara. We look forward to that project moving forward. There's no other hands raised digitally, so we're going to close that round of public participation. We. We've now completed the necessary paperwork to now have a swearing in with our mayor and our new councilperson. Make sure you're positioned properly for the photo, come on.
Do you want us to move the podium?
Testing, testing. You're the only one who's ever had everyone in there swearing in. Okay, Jessie, oh, sorry.
Rich, James, you're not in the union, man. You guys are going to get in trouble.
I state your name.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
The United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Discharge.
Discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations, Jessie.
Welcome aboard, Ms. Webb. We will be reaching out tomorrow or tonight, however it works, with with more information on how. Everything works going forward. Mr. Secora, you'll need to be here Thursday or that starts. I'll make a couple amendments on the fly to our committees as we stand. We might as well get everything done right now, so. With some amendments to our committee structure, I will be placing myself on policy. Let me just open up my sheet here. Ms. Webb will be placed on police personnel and public safety, ITT and BAC. Those are the standing changes to our current committee structure. I don't believe I have any other updates on the night. That does it for our agenda. We do not have anything scheduled for executive session. What is council's pleasure?
I make a motion, we adjourn?
Second with mercy.
Motion by Mr. Kirchner, second by Mr. Weiss, all those in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Thank you, everybody.
Hey, Brian, good conversation.